Anyway, let's get started at seven oh six. Hope you all please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
But even just to the lie. We had a student so American. We'll see everybody that stands one issue. The red hot individual.
Meanwhile. Right, Dr. Willard acknowledges.
Yes, so today we are very fortunate to have the students and staff of the Rockville Boag program with us. I think we have a partnership with Rockville for their Boag program. It's an excellent program and the adults get awesome experience there, one of the best in this state. So we have some staff here tonight to to wish yourselves.
Yeah. Um, go ponder any advisory committee from town to Boag. And so four years ago, we sent these students over to Rockville and go ahead and participate in the Boag program. This is their opportunity to just give a brief summary of what they've been doing in the four years and what their plans for afterwards. So if you want to be present and wish yourself.
Hello, I'm Andy. Sit down.
My name is Zach.
I'm Sydney.
My name is Sam.
So as I introduced myself already, I'm Andy, a member of the Rockville AST program. And today, as mentioned earlier, I'm here to talk about my experiences in the Rockville FA program, AST program and as well as my future. So as well as the ultimately, thank you for your time and allowing us, all four of us to go to the program. So when I first joined the Ag program, I was definitely not the same person I am today. I was always wearing sweatpants, sweatshirts. They're completely different. I was at my hood up. Couldn't even stand up here and even try to do a speech in front of the floor or anything. It's definitely helped me improve with public speaking confidence and overall just been great. But at first, complete opposite until I met teachers and my peers and stepped through that threshold, become a better public speaker. And I took classes such as the leadership class that is mandatory for the AST program and that helped me push me to become a leader. And another great thing about this program is I was able to travel to Indianapolis my junior year and to their national FFA convention, people from all the way over in Alaska to Hawaii. And people from all over, different people walks the life was amazing, one of my favorite memories. It also has helped open the door for different jobs like the job I'll be returning to in the future this summer, working for Bailey Brothers Life King. But overall, it's been a wonderful journey. And even though it's coming to an end, I'll definitely have fond memories of this in the future. And we just wanted to thank you all one more time for allowing the opportunity to be a part of the big family in Rockville AST program. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time for having us here. Again, I'm Zach from the Rockville Boag program. To start off. Rockville. First of all, the Boag program kind of gives you like another group to like be a part of. In like from when I first started freshman year, I was like new school, didn't really have any friends. And that Boag program kind of helped me to find a group of people who had same interests, had some of the same like ideas of what they want to be. And it kind of helped me to make friends easier along the way. Also, Ag has taught me mainly a lot more discipline than just regular school. First of all, with leadership classes, showing what it takes to be a good leader. And showing team building activities and just things of that sort. And also through the SAE program, the Super Agricultural Experience, which is a project that you students, all students are required to do. They can do local and it just helps to teach you, to teach them how to manage their time. It helps them explore their pathway that they want to learn about. And it along the way teaches certain skills based on what you're doing. Like I myself have had a few SEs. What my first one really was taking care of fish for two years. And just discovering what it would look like to care and raise animals and then sell them afterward. A little bit of entrepreneurial skills. And that led to me getting a job in Tallinn, actually Water Gardens, which gave me a little bit of work experience to get another job at what I work at now, which is Agway. And Ag provides a lot of opportunities for people to like join, like there's a B-club at school and just competitions to teach like how to be fair, how to win and lose graciously. And just how to do your best throughout it all. And I think discipline is a big important part of Ag because without discipline, you can't really do anything well. Like I've found that since I must stay home, I was taking less time to just do what I wanted, do what I needed to do. Thank you.
Alright, so Zach touched a lot about the leadership, but again, I just wanted to reiterate that in our leadership classes, which is required sophomore year, we learned a lot of skills such as financial and time management, public speaking, and even just professionalism in general. But another thing we get besides leadership portion is also career skill sets. So I know most of us have kind of a variety of like pathways, which is what we call like kind of it's like a mini major in class. So those are natural resources, animal science, mechanics, and plant science. And for mine, I'm going into animal science. Originally, when I wanted to go to the Rockville program, I first learned that I wanted to go there in sixth grade when there was a presentation at the middle school during an assembly about a few different schools. And I had the idea going in there that I wanted to be marine biologist. I learned later on that I didn't like that as much and I was more into like the larger animals and mammals. So now I'm actually going to be going to Purdue University to study vet science. But a lot of the skills that I've gained here, I know will give me a head start. We get to do a lot of hands-on experience. I don't know if any of you have ever been to school, but if you go in the back kind of by the turf, you can see a lot of our livestock which are outside. We also have a small animal lab indoors and we have a lot of hands-on practice. So I'm one of the feeders at our school, so I go to the livestock during the days, mornings, afternoons, weekends, holidays. And I'm there to be able to check on them. I feed them. We do some of their medical care. So I have hands-on experience with injections. I've seen surgeries. I can do tomorrow in our vet science class, we're learning how to do sutures. So you also get a lot of hands-on experience in a career field that you're going to. I know Andy does mechanics. He gets a lot of hands-on experience doing welding. I was in a mechanics class with him where we actually got to build a wall, do some plumbing. We did electrical work and created our own like systems in the wall and then we built a roof as well. I've been with Zach and Sam in the aquaculture fields. We have an aquaculture lab where we get to go in. We have a bunch of different varieties of fish or just general aquatic species. We get to learn the care for them. We do some research projects with them. And I know I haven't taken too much plant science classes, but we also have greenhouses that give us the capability to actually grow our own plants. Recently, we just had our plant sale, so students will go in there, they'll grow plants throughout the few months and then they'll sell them to make profit for fundraiser for a program. So on top of the leadership skills that you heard from Andy and Zach, we also have a lot of like career skills. But none of that would be possible without you guys. I know at least me, Sam, and Andy have taken the bus a lot. So the bus that you guys have that transports us from Tallinn to the out-of-town school is very important for us. My sister takes it right now when I'm not able to bring her to school or back. So we would not have been able to go to the school without that. And also just the funding that you guys provide for us to be able to go there in general. It really helps us out and we wouldn't be able to do any of that without that. So thank you. Wow.
Thank you.
So once again, my name is Sam. Before coming to the agriculture program in Rockville, I was unmotivated, I had bad grades. I was insecure and just wasn't sure what to do with the rest of my life. I was 210 pounds and three inches shorter. And after the first year of being within Ag, being around all these people, having amazing teachers, everything above them, just believing in me, caring about me and wanting me to do better. They got me to be way more confident than I was. They got me to actually want to do something. And like Zach mentioned, I continued working in the aqua lab. My junior and senior year, I ended up basically running the place. I taught like the freshmen, sophomores how to run everything. And my teacher would basically pull me out of class to make help if there was a problem. A few times she flooded the lab and I had to fix it. And even past that, just with the FFA and my personal leadership skills, I was able to lose in a year. I went from 210 to 150. And I, my junior year, I became the captain of our wrestling team. I won conference twice. I got eighth place at states. And all of that I attribute to the confidence, to the just people in Ag caring about me. And I wouldn't have done wrestling. I wouldn't have done anything in my life that I've done now without it. I'm now pursuing my education further in marine science at Roger Williams University. Already I'm starting a program with one of the professors there to help with their lab and go out on the boat and stuff. I got my boat license. I got a scuba diving license and I'm diving headfirst into the underwater in the ocean and all because of this program, all because of these people. So thank you for your time.
Anytime.
Loved every second of that. These are, we talk about it a lot up here and I don't know how often you guys get to. I hope you're not tuning into these meetings every week because they're, they're long. But this is our favorite. I'll speak for myself, but I know a lot of the people, everybody sitting here loves these parts of me where you guys get to come in and show off some of the cool stuff that you've been doing. Zach, right Zach, you mentioned discipline. Discipline, we were just talking about this a few weeks ago in my program. And, and, and it, it made me think there for a second. Discipline, I love that you mentioned it because without discipline, where is the consistency, right? Where's the consistency come from? And so, you know, I think it's a testament to every single one of you and every single adult sitting behind you and next to you. You know, I was fortunate to have that support and it looks like you do too. And I think with the discipline of the people around you, but also in you, in each and every one of you, you're going to find that consistency and I'm going to come visit wherever you are. I was said my, a student in my program, he was playing football at Vernon High School. And you know, you walk back to the field and you see the goats and you see the, you know, all the animals. And I always wondered like who feeds, like who takes care of, you just answered that for me tonight, like a lifelong question. My brother played football. This was amazing. So genuinely, well done to all of you. Congrats. This is exciting. Come back, let us know how things are going, you know, I'm intrigued. So well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know what? Alright, I just want to just a couple of comments. One, coming here and standing up and speaking as you have is not easy. And we, we do this every other week and, and it's still intimidating. I'm absolutely impressed at your poise and your ability to stand up and really present and communicate. Kudos. I want to touch on something you said about knowing that you wanted to do this program in, did you say sixth grade?
Yeah.
And, you know, focusing on that goal and then, you know, adjusting a little bit as you went from what you said, the marine biology up to the larger animals, to have a path like that and to be refine that tool is simply wonderful. And I'm thrilled to hear you say it. I hope people watching articulate that to everybody that's watching that. I know adults that don't have that goal that seem to stumble a bit as they go through. So to find it and to, to really be able to focus and drive to that shows a strength that I hope you realize you have because it's wonderful.
Yeah, I'm just really going to echo most of what Jaden and Tony said, but thank you so much for coming tonight and for sharing your experiences and the benefits that this program has given you. I recognize a couple of your faces from when you were young and I'm so happy for you. I'm so proud that you guys found, you know, what you were looking for and you have such bright futures ahead. So again, and thank you for telling us about, you know, how much your, the staff there has meant to you and the mentors was certainly something we talk about all, all the time here. So we're so grateful that you have that in your program as well. And thank you to your parents who came tonight to support you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to all of you and you know, it's really nice to hear your stories. I live on a farm and in Tallinn and you know, they always say, you know, no farms, no food. And that's true in, in all respects and we need people to nurture our environment and to take up this cause. And I'm proud of you all and I hope that you have the brightest futures.
Oh, thanks for coming. This really is the good stuff, right? It's, it's, we're hearing, we're hearing and seeing and meeting the future. You know, and what we have to provide and so and what you can do with different programs and different things. And all of your stories are very inspirational. I think it's really important to communicate, you know, you communicated how it made you, like it turned your, your whole trajectory around pretty much. So finding what makes those wheels turn and finding what inspires people. It sounds like it's inspired you in so many ways. And then we all have worked together as to help each other through it. We've heard it real a lot about Deca and athletics and this program here. It's just so important that not everybody's trajectory is the same. Not everybody's trajectory is I'm going to go to, you know, UConn or wherever, you know. Some people are going to go into trades, some people go to university, some people are going into farming, different things. And it's exciting. I don't, as Tony said, that some adults still don't know what they want to do. Okay, no, but I think it's fantastic listening to your stories because even when you started, you thought you wanted one thing and by taking the courses, you beard left a little. And I think that's amazing that this program and different programs allow you to figure out who you are and what you want to do. And thank you very much for coming today. I, I appreciate you standing up. I mean, my, you know, it's brave to stand up in front of any group of people, whether it's one person or 50 people. So you all spoke so eloquently and passionately about it. So I appreciate it.
Thank you all. And once again, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or you can. Thank you. When's graduation? Is it? About two, oh, it's almost two weeks exactly. Next Wednesday? This is coming. Yeah.
You guys.
Pressed behind you guys.
Yeah.
They had those animals. Thank you all. Yeah, that's a tough spot. Yeah, am I the only one that was a very stud in Boag? So she, correct, so she, she explained it in a way that we can almost have. Cause I had no idea. In description and I was going to hesitate. Got you. That's why she played it and I'm glad she did. Right, whatever was included in agriculture, there's farming, well farming.
I need this later.
But do we have any additions to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Understand a motion for the approval of the May 14th minutes. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Jayden.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Hi Jen.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
And Dr. Willard, motion passes. Right, public participation. The members of the Tallinn Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments stirring points of information, however, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting session. If you'd like to be recognized, if you're in the room, raise your hand. If you are online, simply raise your zoom hand. As always, please start with your name and address. Again, if anybody in the room would like to speak, please raise your hand. Online, please raise your zoom hand. You would have got me to look too. Dr. Willard, we will close public participation. My correspondence.
We had the last two weeks, seven emails come in, six of them were budgetary and reduction of nature and one was a residency question.
Is it? Thank you, sir. Points of information, would anybody from the board like to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I went to the parade, marched in the parade of Little League. Saw our great band and musical students doing what they do for the town. It's good to see and it was, it was a good, it was a nice day.
Really, it was, it was pretty.
Yeah.
And a wonderful parade as well.
Yeah.
Alright, would anybody else like to speak? Alright. Student representatives report.
Alright, so senior class day and class night are next Monday, Friday. Super excited.
Class day is at Holiday Hill and then class night is somewhere in South Windsor.
Don't really remember.
So fill that in, fill that blanket, go free.
What takes, what takes, what, what happens on this?
So, uh, do you want to say it? So class day is like, we go to Holiday Hill, which is this, I think, is it a summer camp? They have, they have like rock climbing, there's pools, there's food being displayed at all hours. And it's basically like, just like a day review to just have fun with your class. And it's kind of like one of the last times that you'll just be able to be with your whole class and just have a bunch of fun things to do. And then class night is more of like a formal event. It's at, you know, that place in South Windsor. It's more, you dress formally. It's like a sit-down dinner type of thing. You get your yearbooks and then they have like a slideshow playing with all like pictures that people submit.
And class day buses are already assigned. They're on the class of 2025 Google Classroom. You can still sign up for class night if you want to. You have to reserve, you have to RSVP. Please do that right now and or soon. Moving on, senior thank you scrolls. Four different teachers or staff are in the office. They can be filled out and come back into the office at any time before the last day of school. It's a great way to thank teachers or staff that have made meaningful impacts in your life. And it is a very, very fun tradition for both the students and the staff.
And you can thank any teacher from kindergarten to whoever you have right now. Okay. Also, last week we had our spirit week, which unfortunately our pep rally did get canceled due to lack of participation, but we at least had the spirit week, so that was fun. Yeah.
And then the moment we've all been waiting for, we, senior graduation is June 16th on a Monday, Dr. Willard. But that's okay. And then senior finals for the seniors who do need to take finals will be on the 12th. First and second block will be on the 12th and then on the 13th, third and fourth block will be on the 13th. And for high school, our last day is the 19th because we had a situation at the high school that other schools did not have. So we are going to be graduating. They're going to be graduating a day later than the rest of the district. And that is it. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Go ahead, Jayden. Yeah, no, yeah, I just, you got, you guys only had like one more meeting or two more meetings with.
Yep.
Your time's coming up.
I have one more meeting and then I'm gone after three years.
Yeah.
And my first time ever voting will be on June 3rd over the budget. It's an awesome thing to get to vote for. I'm so excited.
Got to vote for the first time, but in the last one.
If it makes you feel any better, if it comforts you, my first vote was a referendum as well. So you know what, just part of the, part of the, what's this, the fraternity sort of that wouldn't work here, but you get the point. Part of the, no, no, good, you're participating, good, participate, be a part of it.
Yeah.
Very good.
Register to vote. Anyways, I have to go. I have to go buy cupcakes. For the last Deca meeting of the school year tomorrow. We're going to have cupcakes. We're going to announce our new officers. We're going to give out awards. You can come. You guys should all come. Maybe you should come. Honorary Deca member. But there will be cupcakes. There's going to come pick them up with.
I practiced the end of Deca.
I believe we didn't get you. Alright.
Yep. No, I know you tried so.
Gotta change my message.
You know, we're, I want to see the placement.
Yeah, I haven't seen you guys training anyone yet.
That's an interesting point. So currently, we do not have anyone who ran. So for the very beginning of the year, you will not have student representatives. Most likely, they will, they will be holding an election next year during the very beginning of the year. So we do not know.
You're elected to do this?
Yes.
You don't just volunteer?
No, this is for student council. Sorry.
I thought you were talking about.
Like force a sophomore into sitting here and doing it?
It's, the rule is going to be filled. We don't know by who. That's out of our hands. But. But, um. Yeah.
No, they, they get elected, so there's.
Student council decides.
Yes.
That's all, I got you. In terms of, in terms of DECA officers, did you get quite a few signed up? I, I keep looking at you, I keep. It's gonna be very DECA, Sarah, you know, did you get a good number of signed up?
Yeah, so for the past two weeks of DECA, we've had officer election weeks, which meant, uh, for the first two weeks in like three years, I haven't had to dress up in a blazer and go to school, which has been wonderful. Um, so we've had ten candidates to run for five officer positions. We have them all chosen. I ran the election committee as the vice president and be highest ranking senior in the club. And it's a really good group, so you'll probably see them scattered about next year. Very exciting, whatever on Wilsey's honor, she's a state officer for next year, so she'll be in the state. She'll be doing her thing up there, but it is a, it's gonna be a really good year for DECA if there is DECA. And that in time. But no, things are looking up good. One would hope. But that's actually it. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Go get your stuff.
Thanks. I will.
And if you have extra.
I was gonna say.
In two weeks, I'll be right back here with the two week.
Perfect.
Good thing.
I guess I had. Uh, same here.
Right, excuse me, committee and liaison reports, communication.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Not even looking at you.
Thank you, but nothing at this time.
Okay, curriculum.
We met right before this meeting. Yes, that's me, we met right before this meeting and had a good discussion on electives. How, why, you know, they're, they're chosen. So, yeah, it was a good, good discussion and, uh, very informative as to, um, how they're chosen, why they're chosen, um, uh, and what goes into having one elective in the catalog.
So when you say how and why they're chosen, you mean by the student or by the district?
Yes.
It's that precise.
Perfect.
And that information is in the curriculum folder like every other committee folder. So if you're in the dashboard, go to the bottom, just open the folder and go to the page.
Thank you. Uh, I know Dana's not here, but anybody from FFC? Okay. I'll see.
No, we pushed it to the next month because of some policies going forward.
That's the one to the key. Thank you. Negotiation.
Yeah, right, we'll, we'll, negotiations with DECA students.
Thank you all. All right, uh, chairperson's report. Brian stole my, my thunder a little bit. And like I said, my, my daughter and I attended the, the parade. Memorial Day Parade, what was it, Sunday? I think it was. And, you know, the, the striking things, we, we sat there, parked at the BOE building, uh, sat there in front, looked across and the, you know, as they were doing the announcements and kind of, uh, just talking through, you know, from the, from the building across the way, and everybody coming down. It, it really just touched me, you know, with everything that we've been going on, it's, it's just nice to see the community pull together and then just celebrate holiday together and do a parade. You know, it, it didn't matter, it didn't matter what group, what, what party, what anything. We were all there to, to celebrate the reason, you know, for the holiday, the, the kids were running, doing the candy. It was, it was very picturesque. And, and I really just enjoyed and appreciated that moment. I wanted to just take a second and congratulate everybody that participated in and everybody that took the time to make sure it happened. You know, as, as we discovered throughout all of this, none of that is, is guaranteed. And so I'd certainly appreciate it if that's happening. All right, moving on. Dr. Willitt, note superintendent's report, new business, food service meals.
So, um, occasionally, the food service program, which is an independent program, as you know, it's under the umbrella of the Board of Ed, but, um, it does not draw from operating funds. Uh, it self-sustains, and so occasionally we will have to raise the prices for, um, for lunches, breakfast, and so on. And so at this point, um, we're bringing a proposal to the board. And we're proposing that meal prices are increased slightly. Um, if you take a look, you'll notice that most of the breakfast prices here, all breakfast prices are going up by five cents. Um, the other meal, lunch, would be going up by twenty-five cents. Uh, even with these increases, our average, um, Collins, on average, we're typically below the state's average of the price of the meals. So, um, so we can provide a very cost-effective program for the district, also a very cost-friendly option for families. Um, and when you look at the prices, um, for instance, uh, you know, lunch, THS lunch, the new proposed price for, that would be three seventy-five, uh, per standard. And you're getting, if you're getting sandwich, you're getting the meat, you're getting the vegetables, you're getting a drink, you know, there's nowhere in town you can get a meal like that for three dollars and seventy-five cents. So, um, you know, it's a very, very cost-friendly program. And so, uh, in order to maintain our, uh, independence of this program, we will have to occasionally raise the prices, and that's why it's being raised now. We also did do a deep dive at an FFC the other day on the food service, setting up our C program as well, kind of illustrating wins and outs, you know? And that's in the FFC folder. If you, you know, get a chance or wanna scroll down to it, that, that information is there in that meeting. Those meeting docs. So it's just a very simple request to the board to adjust the price. And there's a proposed motion.
Questions?
Well, this is the TTA, is that teachers?
Tallinn Transition Academy.
Okay.
It's one of our satellite programs.
Yeah.
The deck without these increases, where does that place the source cost?
Probably within a year or two, we would have to come to the board for, for planning. You consider these are purchased by hundreds of kids daily, you know, over a while and then. We would not, we would have to be partially funded by the board. Whereas if we increase it like this, um, we, we maintains the independence of the program.
But, no, when was the last time that we did it, that we did an increase?
Two or three years ago. Something like that, yeah. And the prices of food have gone up. It's already in the last few years. Everybody knows that, when you go to the grocery store, you're spending way more. Um, all of their, all of their, um, you know, their food materials have gone up considerably.
And are we seeing, uh, don't mean specific numbers, but we're seeing a fairly steady use?
Absolutely. I think, um, one of the things that happened in the last two or three years also is that, um, and this is a good thing, um, and I think I mentioned it to the board at one point or another, at least FFC. Um, there's a new, new law, and the new law is, um, appropriately anti-shaming law, you know, unshaming. And so what happens is kids that go, um, you know, to acquire lunch, uh, in the past, you, you might, person might have been able to say, I'm sorry, you don't have enough money in your account, you know, we'll give you granola bar, send you to the office to get it, granola bar. You can no longer do that. Uh, so if a person approaches for lunch, they are, the state requires that you give them a lunch, regardless of the status of, um, what's owed by the parent. So, um, that new law has created quite a bit of additional work for us in terms of, there's quite a bit of collections activity, uh, you know, trying to reach out, collect that money. My parents aren't always realize that that's what's going on, so we, we reach out, try to collect it. Um, and sometimes kids will, uh, dump the lunch they have and go grab the lunch. Um, because they like the lunch that's served in the caf, um, but to mom and dad's chagrin, or dad and chagrin, or mom's grin, you know, uh, they find out, wow, there's a balance here, but I sent my child with lunch. Um, we are not allowed to refuse a lunch, and we're not allowed to mention it. So we can't mention that there's, um, any kind of, uh, amount owed, um, and we can't really say anything. Just if someone presents for lunch or and breakfast, you know. So that has also increased some of it a little bit too. Those are gonna next question, those collection activities are funded by the program or out of the main. Again, it, well, and it's all independent through our, we're all.
Okay, what's the threshold that you're reaching out to families? So like for the example of the kid who might go, or the student who might be going to spend and buy the lunch, and they might not, parents might not realize it.
Yeah.
How far do you let that sort of?
You don't have to let it go, it's, there is no stopping.
But I'm saying maybe from when you start communicating with that family.
Well, almost immediately.
Got you.
Yeah, I can all reach out. There's a program that everybody signs up for and it provides you, and it'll send reminders, emails, phone calls, um, but some don't respond.
That's the part I'm just not familiar with.
It's an automated email you get.
Got you.
So like, for instance, my account is set up for when there's ten dollars or less.
So you know.
So I know.
Okay.
You, you don't have to set it at anything, so it's a negative, it'll send you an email. I'm assuming it's auto-generated?
And it, yep, it's part of an uploaded data, but, um.
Then someone actually physically follows up on it.
We will, uh, in most extreme cases, we'll be, we'll call, but, um, there's really no motivation to pay.
Yeah.
But in order to, so in order to get hot lunch, say this is my first day at school. I haven't set up any account or anything. I go up to the, to the, to the, to the, uh, in the ten six years, so I just don't remember. And I go up to the counter. And I say, I want deli or whatever sandwich today, and I didn't set up an account, I don't, my mom didn't set up an account or anything like that.
Well, the fingerprint, fingerprint is already put in there with.
With, right, with.
You would touch your finger, that's how they'd know who you are. They would be connected to you, but, um, beyond that, you know, that we would give you the.
Over. I'm just trying to understand how, if they don't have one of those accounts that the parents set up, you know, did themselves, they're getting a phone call from you, are they still getting that email even though they?
But, and.
Phone call or email.
Even that, it's the email they put in.
Right, so they have to set it up themselves.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to totally ignore the whole system, they can.
That's, that's.
I mean, they can't ignore us because we have their phone numbers, but there's really nothing that prevents someone from taking advantage of that program. It's still got a lot of advantages for the people that would have otherwise been hurt by it, which is why it's there. But there's really nothing to prevent, I mean, we try to do collections activity, but unless we were to hire a collections agency, which would cost more money.
Yeah.
Almost as much as what you're collecting. Um, although some of them will take fifty percent, you know, there's a whole bunch of options here, but it still costs money.
Got you.
So, um, now, you know, we do a lot of that kind of thing. All-in, all-in, all-in.
Well, providing school lunch matters. So, um, it, it's, it's, it can be the difference in somebody, a student succeeding and not, I mean, literally.
And so. Which is why it's, why it's.
Which is why, oh, at the end of the day, whatever the cost and this and that, it, it, there's data out there. I mean, the Minnesota governor talks about it all the time, where feeding kids lunch, you know, how, no matter how old, is a benefit, you know? So, long-term, so, um, so regardless of what it is, I'm supporting, let's get, let's make sure the kids eat, or the students eat and they're fed. Um, I was just curious because that, it seems. I, I don't know how, how do you manage that if we're in the, I don't know, that's.
Yeah, I'm going around that in my mind right now, this seems like an own prosperous program.
Well, that's.
Cause then you have people that are paying for lunch, whether they can afford it or not, if they're making an effort to pay subsidizing people or just, you know, like you said, potentially, hopefully not everyone is doing that, but you can also potentially be paying for people that are just snubbed in the system, right? Like.
So, but, but, you know, but, um, but this is why for us, you know, in terms of increased costs and materials and food materials and, you know, new things that need to get handled, uh, the prices are to increase mostly is food, uh, costs and things like.
Any other comments? All right, uh, undertake a motion to move this to board action. So move second. Any discussion? Begin this is to move it to board action. All right. Jen.
Aye.
Rainy.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hi, Jen. Dana.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Dr. Willitt, make that item N one. All right, moving on, old business item M one, budget.
Hey. So, um, you have access to the dashboard to the tool that we've been using. What I tried to do for the board to help is, um, I tried to provide tabs, which I posted to the dashboard earlier. Um, the link that steers you to the same thing that's been posted a couple of times. But what I did is that tool, I added two tabs to the tool. And so there's a proposed narrative that kind of gives you a sense of, um, you know, to try to get to the one four six. Here are some things you could consider, you know, to get there. There, this narrative, the reason I call it a narrative is it, it also talks about a mitigating factor. So, you know, if you have to lose this, AKA the reduction item, what is the mitigating factor for why that versus something else? And so, um, you know, that's hopefully to give you a sense of why those things were thrown up there. Obviously, no reductions are what we wanna do here, but if you had to, for instance, the SRO piece, um, the mitigating factors are, unlike some other places, you know, you do have both a troop C within half mile, many places are a mile, and you also have a resident troop office, you have two things that are very close to the schools. They did hired administrative trooper, which we work very closely with. Um, TPS does have a security officer, and perhaps we would expand that program over time, which would be, um, more cost-effective to your overall force operations. So the point is, there's a reduction, and then there's the mitigating factor. So I used that as an example. Of course, nobody wants to do any of these kinds of reductions, so just prefacing that again, because while I'm the one speaking these words, I'm not saying, let's not have any of this, that, or the other thing. It's the board who has to make the determination. But I did my best to try to explain why these would be the ones that possibly would be thrown to you tonight for consideration. Same thing with, um, say THS teacher. There is a resignation in the Phys Ed department, that means that person would not lose their livelihood. We could still maintain the, um, state compliance. It's not gonna have additional sections or electives, but we would be able to run state compliance, um, you know, enough to comply with the state rules for Phys Ed. So we would just not rehire that person. Nobody wants to lose nurses, but there would be a nurse reduction, I would leave about one twenty-five as an average across the schools. And then, um, these languages that have come up in the past, Spanish would remain at the middle school, but, um, we do not have pressure at the middle school, and you would still have world, you know, the French and Spanish at the base school. There are many, there are, there are reasons why that would be, um, challenging, but, um, in lieu of some of these other things that could happen, and these are things that have been considered and put out there. Um, if you look at the one point four six tab next to it, they should have a green tint on them. The table one, table two, table three, table one is, as you know, the kind of walk down from where you were to where you are, and also calculates by, you know, on the fly. Um, table two has both additions and reductions, there's an age back inspection requirement that you have to do, we're starting five ball now. And that'll cost about thirty-three thousand, so that's why that's in an addition, that they give you that example, and then there's the reductions. Um, and roughly, you know, if you go down the line, um, blue to the red, although some of that got a little inflated over time, that was generally, you know, you're kind of a stamp of time span. The blues were the earliest, the reds were into this board of ed, um, adopted budgets, and then the pink is everything additional beyond staff. Now, across the entire table, if it is highlighted, it is a staff member. So the entire table are the cuts. Table two has all the cuts. Now you'll notice where it says, click on the tab that, you know, refers you to a tab, the tab would be at the bottom. So if it says, refer to the tab at the bottom for conference travel and contract, click on that tab, that's, that's all the rest of that field. So that kept it from being, you know, even longer than it is. So the point is that, that, that table there includes everything that brings you down to one point four six. Um, the proposal is the staff that I just discussed to get you to the one four six. So it's the staff discussed to get to the one four six plus all the rest of this. And the pink is the new rest of this. It's what came to get you from where you were to one four six. So that's the proposal. Um, and then if you look back at the seven point three four to one four six tab on the far left, that is the document, that's the tool without any of those changes made. That's the tool that, you know, you were looking at a week ago where none of the moves were made yet. So there's the tool that you were looking at a week. So there's the tool that you were looking at a week ago with none of the moves, and then there's the proposed narrative or, you know, proposed to one four six in the. Two tabs next to it, narrative kind of explaining it, and then the actual iteration of all of it. So this way, um, and again, you know, reiterating that there's no such thing as a good cut. And we're doing our best to manage things. But that this maintains athletics, freshman athletics, TMS athletics, which means a lot to kids in affinity programs. Explains that clubs and activities, while not funded by the board. Um, if enough parents wanted to sign up for such things, it would be about a minimum of twenty-five kids to run it. So smaller things like the games club might not run, but something that could be fully funded by parents, meaning twenty-five or more participating. You could probably still go, it just wouldn't have any board funding that would still allow you to reduce that same amount. Um, because you're not paying potentially for the advisor at that point. Parent guardians are fully taking the cost of the advisor. Um, no clubs would run until it's completely collected, which. In the past, it has begun while we were collecting at this point. It would not be allowed to run until all funds are collected, which would mean that there'd be a full accounting every single time. Nobody could lag. So for instance, if we only got twenty-three and we didn't get it from these two, we would not be able to run it. It would have to, until two more came that would, you know, be able to pay, it would not run. So it could go once before it could run that type of thing, but it could still. Run if enough people were supporting it independently. It also allows for some summer custodial work because it will be devastated from the point of view of trying to get the schools ready if there's absolutely no assistance in the summer. The people we have, there's not enough people to do the amount of work that's necessary. They have to move all of the furniture out, they have to do all the cleaning, move everything back in, all kinds of things are moved around, um. So they rely on some summer assistance to do that, so it means that. It preserves the vital state reporting and compliance and oversight requirements. Right now, we are barely able to get that done. I take on a lot of, uh, the reporting personally. And I disseminate it over the rest of the people that we have. You know, we have so many compliance activities that we have to do, state reports to P I S S, from P S I test reports, ED one sixty-five reports, and all these things. You know, between all of the different PPTs, I P's, state reporting requirements, and you know. All these things, there's no way to do that with, uh. You know, reducing other workforce. That would, that would make it, it's almost impossible now. It's literally almost impossible to maintain compliance for a team. So not having that would put us in a big area of jeopardy. We could actually end up screwing up. Losing funding or owing something to somebody because of it.
Which line item are you speaking about?
I'm just saying that certain staff that are not listed in what I put out there for you to consider, um. Would, not having them would compromise our ability to be able to do. The state reports that have to be done to, to maintain, you know.
You have them in the budget now to take care of them.
Yes, I'm saying that that's why I'm asking, I'm saying you might want to consider going this way, because if we went other ways, it could jeopardize that.
Thank you for the turn. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay. So that's basically it. I tried to. Lay out a, a course for you, a play, you know, given everything you've discussed and things we've talked about, a way through the woods. Knowing that none of us, no one there wants to be doing any of that.
Okay. But thank you, Dr. Will, and just a minute, we'll, but just to make sure I'm orienting as far as the, the information provided. On the tab that shows the proposal to one point four six. Table three. Are not included in the. The, not recommendation, but proposal.
The far left tab, the first tab?
Uh, the third tab.
The third tab, anything that is in table three is not.
Is not included.
Not included in the reduction.
Okay.
So items to be considered, like you can move them in, move them out, but it's not.
So table two. Goes down to the.
Table two is everything that gets you to one four six.
Alright. So. Uh, please bring your hand.
But is it possible to take a short ten or fifteen minute recesses for just that similar information late Saturday or now, just to? Kind of review and possibly write a few things down?
Well, I'd rather go through and, and start talking. Uh, if you want to take it, like you let the other people talk, then we'll give them back to you. But I don't want to just pause. Jen?
Two simple, quick questions. Uh, at, at the very bottom, it says BOE Legal Services. What is that? And this is on the. Super, super technical proposal to one point four six, the third tab. Um, what does that mean?
That is cutting all of our legal services in about half, because I don't want you to lose more people, which is actually something I'm really. A little nervous about, but. I'm hoping that over my decades of experience, I'll be able to pull the database together of all the things we've ever asked and all the answers we've ever been given. And try to reduce the number of times we access attorneys. Having said that. We will be going into teacher negotiations, so there will be utilization of them. On trend would be much higher than this, but I would be doing my very best to try to prevent us from utilizing as much as I possibly could.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, we might overrun that line a little, but my goal would be to run it somewhere in the zone of that or within a deviation or two of that cost. I'm taking, uh, risks a little bit, but it's also so that you don't lose more people.
Gotcha.
You know.
That's fair. I just, I, I just. It, the, the term, my first term started and they were under litigation, litigation, so the idea. That, that makes me a little nervous, I'm not going to lie to you guys, um, although I am very confident in this board's ability to. You know, you know, we're in a, we're in a good spot, um, heading into the next board, so I just, it caught me off guard a little bit, that we're. Eliminating some of our legal services and it makes me think, you know, did we require them beforehand? And if so, what was, what did we need from them? Any? My second question. Getting volunteers in the building, so for like a games club, for example, and you, some of you might be able to tell me this better, because I just don't know the process. You know, if you're going to volunteer in certain places, you have to go through the process of getting fingerprinted and doing a background check and all those things. Is that? Does that apply, uh, whether it's Connecticut or, or Powell specifically? And if it does apply, are there added costs to fingerprinting our, our volunteers and running background checks or anything like that?
We already do the. You know, we have a three-year cycle for background checks. When anybody. Signs up for what we call our volunteer core, volunteer group, you have to become a, uh, registered volunteer with us, which means you. Have to allow us to do a background check on you. And so we do that and then we re-up it every couple of years. You know, everyone who's a volunteer is on a cycle.
Yeah.
And every couple of years, we recheck the people, you know, based on when they, and. Um, so we already do that. I would recommend that we not ever cut that.
Oh, no, that's not what I'm, no, that.
I'm not suggesting you say that you should, but I'm right. So yes, we do, and no, we wouldn't be putting that up for.
No, my, my question is actually the opposite of that in the sense of. If we're going to be requiring the, the services of more volunteers. Does that add to, again, the cost of whatever system that you have that runs it every year, or we might have new signups this year? I'm assuming we have to pay somebody to do the fingerprinting, we have to pay somebody to do background checks. If we have an influx of people, what does that look like in terms of how much we have to pay for that, for their service?
Well, yeah, but we also use CGIS. Um, so as long as some of us go through training, for instance, I'm trained in the CGI as a database and I'm allowed to do checks and things like that. And so are some other people who are on it. So we're able to do that. It's not a massive cost, was.
That's, that's, that helps. Thank you. Uh, that's all I have for now. Keep comments brief. I don't like it, I don't like any of it, but neither does anybody else, so, uh, that's, those are my only two quick questions right now.
Yeah, me?
Uh, one question, well, I guess I got a couple. Uh, one would be, you mentioned if you had, uh. You need twenty-five in a club, you only had twenty-three. And now we can't cover the cost of the stipend. Would, would you reach out to the twenty-three and say, do you want to chip in an extra ten bucks so we can run this, or just, just that's going to be it? Like if we don't get twenty-five?
Yeah, we could. I mean, I think typically we are, we would be very clear that we have to reach a certain number. Um, we certainly could, it's just, uh. You know, reaching back out to twenty-three different people, no. Right, so, so I'm not, I'm not against it, especially if it was a beloved thing. You know, if we get something like five, it's probably over. You know, but if it was close and people were really deeply desiring it, we would, we would end to try to bend over backwards to make it out. But, um. But to that point, like, what sometimes has happened is because there are financial hardships and things, um. We would have to restrict, uh, assistance of any kind to people that were on free and reduced lunch. Whereas it might have been a little broader than that.
So you wouldn't maybe just kind of. For lack of a better term, assume that maybe X percent might be free and reduced lunch, so that, that. Particular group is maybe less or not. Paying, and then therefore that here's the real cost for those who can, you know what I mean?
Yes, well, that is how that works. It's kind of like, um, if you happen to have a few F R Ls, then you. They might make up the twenty-five when you're covering it, you know, slightly somewhere else, but there wouldn't be any other leeway. And in the past, basically, you know.
You're obviously running.
There's been a lot more leeway, yeah, and now that would no longer be happening.
Okay, well, I just want to clarify that, that we have a fair amount of interest in it and, you know, the group that is interested is willing to. Step up to the plate to the degree that they can, then we would do our best to run it. That was what I was wanting to. And the, the world language at the bottom is not in yellow. So I, I maybe missed, okay, so that is, would be in yellow.
That should be yellow.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, you don't know.
Yeah, there's no. Um, the BGP reduction is listed at forty-five, seven, one, three, twenty. But it was at fifty-seven, three, one, two, fifteen in a prior. Uh, iteration of this, so I'm wondering what is the difference there?
Are you talking about the nurse?
Nurse.
I have BGP teacher before was fifty-seven, three, one, two, fifteen, maybe I'm misreading this. That's in table three, Rainy, okay. This one's the nurse, oh, that's the nurse, okay, that's it, okay, yep, that, that's me being wrong. Um, okay, then goes it.
Katie?
In, in the table that talks about the participation rates for the clubs. Um, this might not be possible, but I want to ask anyway. Is it possible to, to know what the unduplicated participation rate is? I would imagine there are children or students rather who participate in more than one club. So I'm just wondering, is it six hundred and seventy-two children come, you know, totally, or? Is it like?
Yeah, that would be, um, you know, in all, I'm not sure who's, if there's any duplications there, um. It's just, that would just be. Total participation in each of these clubs, but you're right, like, there may be some duplicates. There's probably not a massive number, but. There might be a few.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, and then. The, the, so the loss of French in middle school would leave students to begin the language. In their freshman year, so they would, they could get four years of it. Is, do, are we currently at the possibility for five years? Or no? I know it's. I'm trying to recall. Where that stands, and I'm just wondering. For my own sake, honestly, out of curiosity, what happens to kids if, if, if kids are really going to choose. A language if they can't. Sort of take it as far as the Spanish language. And this is curiosity, it's not pushback at all. I'm sorry, was that not a clear question? I can try again.
No, it's all good, it's all good. I, um, I don't want to, I never know with these things if I'm cutting you off or not, but, um. Yes, it would affect, uh. People taking French, it may make French a less appealing one because they can't start it as early. And they may not be able to make it as far. Um, but it would still be offered at the high school. There would, um, it would be based on the number of sections available with the number of staff that were remaining to do so. Um, they could get through French four, and there's may, maybe they could do something about something more than that. Um, depending on the number of kids who wanted it and how many sections are available and which classes are running and which ones were not running that particular semester. But yes, it would put French at a disadvantage with respect to, um. You know, being able to start early. Uh, that type of thing. Start early or like middle school.
Okay, thank you.
That's.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, you're fast, man, bye, thank you.
Um.
What is the role of the IT technology specialist?
Basically.
And I'm going to ask the same thing about the IT para educator, so.
The educator doing mostly, um, on the ground sort of repairs, fixes, uh, base level, uh. Assistance, you know, things that would run around if you were having problems and reconfigure. Something or fix or, you know, set something up for your software. The IT specialist has a much more involved job. They do almost, um, all of our state, you know, a lot, well, a large chunk of the data of our state report. So when there's a report that has to be completed, you know, we may put the data together like an ED one sixty-five, they make sure that it can. Be processed with the state, um, that, you know, when you're creating an export or an import into databases, they have to match up, the fields have to match up exactly. Um, Power School does a lot of our work with Power School and integrating Power School with the reporting. Um, all the stuff that connects to parents and connects between I five, you know, our communication system that sends messages and, you know, um. Gets information from Power School, they'd be assisting with that. Power School by itself is a major project. It requires many updates and lots of training. That individual's involved in all of that. We'd be at a very big disadvantage if that position was reduced, and we'd probably have to bring them back for consulting because. Um, you don't, you don't have anyone who has that knowledge. The person that that would be impacting has all of that knowledge. So we would have to bring the person back and then consulting or bringing somebody to, to get through a period of time where we had to figure out. And then it would be very, very difficult, which is why it's not. Part of the other list at the moment. It would, it would be a logistical. Problem, and we would have a really hard time adjusting.
What about with the para educator? What does it look like? The work that that person does, I'm assuming it's like. My printer's no longer connecting with my computer, I need help getting a reconnection. What does it look like?
Kind of IT level stuff, you know, so, you know, some.
Who did that fall on?
Yes, some knowledge, but it's, um, but it is doing that kind of thing, assisting with that.
If that person, if we didn't have that person.
That goes back to the three that have remained. You know, and that they'd have to figure it out. If there's a problem, one of those three people would go out, try to help, which also gets in the way of the other things they're doing. Which is why we did that, but, um, and, and to speed up response time, because sometimes when, you know, you get the blue screen of death. You're going to have to wait a lot longer before somebody can come because. That's what happens when there's somebody in that level. Yeah, it's, uh. All of it is very, you know, difficult to adjust to from an operational point of view. When things go down, you need them to, to be able to go back up very quickly. Also, some things of. Making sure Google Classroom and all of that with the Google Suite is running. You know, making sure all of that stuff works and is running okay will be part of it. Too, I mean, there's so many things that, that these individuals cover, um, but that terror would also help the semesters.
Um, do we? Freshman athletics. Do we have a? And I can only speak to baseball, there's not. Actually called Froshmore, the baseball team. When the Froshmore baseball team and the varsity baseball team have games on the same day. There's six kids at JV practice. With the kids that have to go, that go to the varsity game and the kids that drop down for the Froshmore game. There's nine seniors graduating this year and only six eighth graders on the middle school team that were coming in, that are coming in. So with those same numbers, that means our JV practice will only have. Three kids at, at JV practice. Um, there's, there's not enough kids. At least for baseball to have three teams. And, um. You know, as a, as a parent of a kid on the JV team, I actually had to step in. And stop the overuse of my son because of potential injury, because of how they were being used. I'm concerned. That we keep going down this track of forcing. And again, I can only speak to baseball, forcing. A team where we don't have numbers for that team, we're gonna start injuring kids. Or for parents that don't necessarily know when they need to step in. And stop things from happening of overuse. Um, I think. A similar thing. Uh, numbers wise was in basketball, because I would go to the varsity game and I would see six kids from the J V team sitting on the varsity bench. Um, so I attend those. I I I got to imagine that our our numbers are just not there for freshman athletics at this time. And um, you know, I'm wondering your thoughts. I don't know if you've spoken with. With uh Mr. McCluskey about this, uh, but I'm wondering uh your thoughts about that.
Well, I you you had the um. Presentation fairly recently on that. And um what the benefits are of having um. You know, sports that include sort of a freshman component. And there could be Title Nine benefits. There can be all of these additional things. It gives a certain group of kids an opportunity to play that they may never have, if they never move on to varsity, it's their only shot at being in a, I know, high school sport. And it covers Title Nine bases. So there's, there's reasons to have it. The amount you save by not having it. You know, it it's something the board, you can look at, so that's why there's, what's on here is a list, but um, but what you gain. And people, less than kids might lose an opportunity. So that's kind of how that. That amount of money is it worth them not having that opportunity? If they never get to have it again, and you know, and it doesn't have flexibility that it would otherwise have, they can take. Now there are kids that can get on the team. That might not ever get on the team. Not have a shot at getting on the team. There weren't that that structure. So it's. You know, it's got a bunch of benefits, but um. You have to just weigh that against the amount of money we're spending. You know, you'd save that, but is it worth maybe some of these other? Ramifications of not for the, you know?
What is the um? If we have a year where we don't have enough to to run a freshman team safely? Is is there any precedent for saying? I'm sorry. C C C, we don't have a freshman team this year.
I mean, you could.
Ramifications for that with our standing in the C C C by not having a freshman team?
I think you can forfeit, but I mean, I I think um. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's mild upon not to have your ducks in a row enough to be able to field teams. If you can't field them, it might consider. Asking or there might be pressure to do some other. Thing or some other conference, but we're not in that space. Like when you did the presentation, we're, we're, we're pretty well. Set where we're at, and we're we're fielding it enough that we're not peeping off anybody. Um, so. You know, again, it kind of goes back to. The benefits of it for that amount of money might be worth it to hold on to, because. If you cut that. Um, what else is coming in its place, you know, um? It's just at this point, for that amount, it probably does give you a benefit worth holding on to.
And I'm, and I agree, ten thousand dollars to have freshman sports is good value. Um. And again, I can only speak to baseball. I'm concerned with the injury aspect of the overuse because we don't have enough kids and they're playing.
I think that would need to be a judgment call, the coaches, the athletic supervisor, and I would support not overusing. Players to the point of injury or like that, right now.
Um.
There'll be full block, I guess, that's what you're.
Sure.
Tap on to you. So are you talking about? The J V, like J V plus kids who are. Are on J V and can play varsity and they swing them into games? Is that what you have?
But there's also, because it's a Froshmore team and not a freshman team, there's J V kids that drop down as well. So freshmen go up to J V, some freshmen go up to varsity. Varsity guys drop down to J V, some J V guys will drop down to freshmen, so. The the bottom line is there's not enough in that program to support three teams individually. They've got to share. And our numbers are actually worth three less next year. Unless new kids that haven't dried out in middle school now all of a sudden decide to try out in high school, where we're net worth three loss. For for next year.
And I appreciate your question because like there's some years. My daughter's year, there's. She's the, there's three of them that play soccer at her age.
And how many are graduating?
But, well, I mean, she's still in school, but yeah.
Okay.
So.
So when she goes to the freshman.
That's right, but I think then, but then the group below her, there's like thirty kids.
Yeah.
You're twenty something kids, like it's ridiculous. So that's, I guess my question would be, is if like one year. We didn't have enough numbers, but then next year you have that bubble. Like, what is the implications of not fielding one and then?
And then coming back in the next year, right? It messes with schedules and, you know, there's, I I I get that because the C C C does the schedules for us, so it really messes with that aspect of it. So I'm I'm more concerned with an injury.
Better to see that.
Aspect of it. Um, two more questions. Um. This one's referring to the teacher contract. If we have. You know, we, a number of us have talked about volunteers, bringing volunteers to help out with clubs or even sports. Um, if there's a teacher willing to do that. And a volunteer willing to do that, then. Is it in the teacher contract that we automatically go with the teacher and have to pay them as opposed to a volunteer that's willing to do it for nothing?
The teachers have in their contracts, I think it's Article thirty eight. Or it specifies that they get each roles, and typically we do end the past practice for contracts. Going back perpetuity as the teachers are offered that first because it is in their contract as a compensation item. So. Short answer is yes. That would potentially cause issues. They could grieve loss of income, loss of whatever.
So then uh the to add on to that. If we're hiring for a coaching position and a teacher's interested in doing it. And an outside person, not as a volunteer, but hired. Is interested to do in doing that as well and applies for it because I think we post coaching positions. Um, is there an interview process or does the teacher automatically get it in that case as well?
No, there is an interview process, but the teacher will get the first shot typically in that situation. If there's a couple of teachers that's internal, that's the first interview. So there's still gonna be an interview because they still have to be appropriate.
Right.
I mean, there could be reasons why maybe Mr. McCluskey would feel that they weren't off, um, but. Teachers do get the first shot at coaching position. And it is in their contract. There is specific. Iterations in their contract of, you know, pay for clubs and coaching advisors and things like that.
And my last question, you earlier, you had mentioned. Um, about being in compliance with the state on certain things and why we, why you chose. The staff reductions that you chose as opposed to others. I'm assuming that was in reference. To why we're not um looking at admin positions. And we're looking at, you know, potential teacher positions.
Um. I mean. I just can't do it. I can't. Just can't.
When, can you elaborate on that? You can't.
Yeah, I mean, I. Right now, we don't, we have only enough people to do all these requirements that we have, and as it is, I take on a lot of things, you know. I can't imagine trying to do that otherwise. I can't imagine what direction we would turn in for that. That wouldn't cost us more in the end somewhere. Um. In my opinion, it would cost us a lot more to try to do something like that, that what we say. You're right. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Um. I did, if I could, I just want to tack on to Bill because we talked about freshman sports before, so I totally understand where he's coming from. Um. I guess just the other side of it is that. Um. You know, I, my son is currently on the freshman team, and I thought I remembered at the. Ooh, parents night, they said that this year was the highest, you know, amount of um kids trying out for baseball that they've had. And they said that in eighth grade, that that was the highest amount of kids trying out for baseball that they had. Um, I think they said this year was the same as last year for the high school, but it was the highest. It was like forty something kids. And I just think, and I know that you know this, but just making sure, you know, sometimes little bliffs from our meeting gets taken and not, and not the other bliff, so that's the only reason why. It um, because I completely understand where you're coming from and agree with you on a lot of it. Um, but. It did, it it does, you know. It does, in a situation where there would just be possibly, you know, three or four cuts. It allows those kids to play and have the opportunity, and for some of those kids, hey, maybe they should have looked at another sport, you know, may, maybe they should have, you know, maybe they should have tried, you know, golf or something else, and maybe that would have been their path. But for some of them, it really could mean that they gained a lot of skills, they grew a lot their freshman year. Um, and, you know, it could have, could be a make it or break it time for them. So, you know, obviously, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone. I'm all about the opportunity. Um, the other thing is, I think, like, right now on the freshman team, there's like nine kids who who are. Solid freshman players. There's, I don't know, maybe four that. Play up to J V of that. And I think, you know, when they do, they don't get a lot of playing time. I think most of the time they're called up, they don't actually play, so I think that. The majority of those nine kids are still getting the most playtime on the freshman team rather than, you know, just getting the benefits of practice and sitting for most of the J V games. So um, clearly in a situation like yours, and I totally know why you would be concerned, and obviously, there's kids that are out, right? There's kids that are sick, there's kids that are on vacation, we had injury. So that's where then, yeah, you definitely don't have enough to field all the teams, but um. But I just wanted to put that out there as the other side of it to to look at. Um.
But I would also say part of that is because the varsity kids dropping down to J V.
Maybe, yes, yeah.
So that's also part of that as well.
So um, I just, again, you know, if it's something that we can preserve for a small amount of money, and I would even be, you know, um. Pro, you know, looking to see a parent, you know, to to increase the class, um, I just. Okay, as some, for some kids, I know that these are the reasons they come to school, so. I don't want to take it away from them, and we don't absolutely have to. Um, but obviously, we have a lot of tough decisions to make, but that's just something that pulls at my heartstrings. Um. So um, can you? One of the concerns, you know, thank you, Dr. Willett, very much. I know that I have been very um. Pushy about please look over every single, under every single stone that you possibly can because. Um, like all of us, the cuts, you know, the possible reductions that we've been looking at over the first few weeks have been um. Very, you know, upsetting. And um, and like I said last meeting, I I really do believe that they jeopardized, you know, the. The safety and the mental and the physical health and the experience and the opportunities for our, for our students. So thank you so much for what you've provided us and given us a little bit more here to be able to work with. Um, it definitely doesn't, although some of these cuts are still. Do feel awful, it doesn't quite feel as destitute as it has. Um. But one of, one of the things that still sticks out for me is the nurse reduction, and I just think that it's important for um. The public to at least understand what the impacts of that is, if you could. Elaborate.
Yeah, um, the nurses play really, I mean, eating again, you know, asking superintendents to talk about this, that all of these. Roles are crucial, you know, in education. They're all. You know, highly valued and needed, you know, nurses provide obviously frontline medical care in a school district. It may be a little medical care some kids get. Um, you know, they're always dealing with family situations that are complicated. Um, they're often the ones interacting when the children are sick, where there's family um. Needs or trouble. Uh, when kids are exposed to uh certain things at home that are not great, sometimes the. The nurses will be the first to see that in some way and then engage with social services. Um. You know, it's, it's. Not that uh anyone would ever want to reduce the nurse if you didn't have to do it. I think that's just looking at it from a logistical point of view, there's, there's all kinds of impacts in a budget season like this, and. You know, looking at it like one point five nurses in each building is what possibly could be done, managed, but. It's not great. It's just nothing, but I would be saying that about everything here. You're asking about custodians, that's got its drawbacks. You know, I think um. Nurses are one of the most important people in schools. Um, it's not really a question about whether they are or are not. It's about how you reach one point four six and with four million dollars of reductions from your board budget. And that's, there's nothing good that will happen when that kind of thing is necessary. So. You know, they, they are integral, they are frontline, they um. You know, do everything helpful. They work with me on McInnes Bento, homeless issues, um, E C out proposals, all kinds of things, tenants related matters. Um, but. You know, you're, you're in a situation where, again, the custodians, I could say many things about them, even though I'm not trying to draw comparisons between groups. Um, but um, they do a lot of the heavy lifting, no pun intended, across the whole district and everything too. There's, you know, everything that we see happening in the schools. That maintains safety and cleanliness and all of that is so, so it's, it's every group. It, you know, there's something that would be unsavory, undesirable about a reduction in that group. Uh, I don't feel good about any of it, so they're all important. It's just you have. From where you were to where you are required massive cuts. Big cuts.
No, I appreciate you making the comparisons to the custodians, but I do believe that. Like you said, I believe all of these decisions are important, and I do worry about um the health and safety in our schools when it comes to that as well. Can you? So just to be clear, and I know that this is kind of a snapshot in time, and we've seen this with every budget cycle, and you know. Um, we have, you know, late retirements and people leaving for other jobs, and I've heard of a couple recently myself. Um, at this time, with this list. How many people? I know we're losing physicians. How many people will be losing this? What's your proposal?
Well, of the, of the most recent. Iterations here, not going all the way. Um, well, the entire game could, right?
Yeah.
So world language.
Recent.
This was, want the whole picture. World language would be, would be a person. Nurse would be a person. P E would not, would be a, it's a position, but there's a person that has um. And there's a position opening now because of uh. You know, a transfer. Um, S R O, there's nobody in it. Um. The other uh one, L P N is a person. Um. The math is a retiree. As several second, as several, we hadn't built yet, social worker, and um, that. Is that um. Uh, custodian is a person. Um, secretaries would be a person. Paraeducators, uh, those are position openings, but as I talked about, you know, we might get some W F P A's next year on maybe I S or something if we have to cover the I A P. Um, that point seven is um is open, but there was somebody that had been waiting, but now will not. They had an end, but they knew next year it might not happen, so. Um, job coach was um. Remember, we were trying to save money up the consulting, you know, consulting or contracting, so there's. Over there, E B T facilitator, that was a requested position.
So. We are losing a a physical secretary right now? Yes, I thought it was a reduction in.
There is a reduction in uh twelve months, ten months.
Right.
This, what we have in front of you, there would be an impact on the secretarial unit. You're looking at point five and point five. It may be that that can be covered if some people make some adjustments. But there is an impact.
Okay, so I guess it goes without saying that if there's any way that we can. Find places, we will continue to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, okay, for the um. For the unfunded sports. Would the plan just to not? Have them all together, or would we, would we at least try to still enable parents to fully compensate?
Well, the parents would still have the sport. They they shoulder the vast majority of the cost of it as it is.
Yeah.
But the board would contribute enough.
Yeah.
Whereas, you know, what we've been trying to do is. Over time, provide a little support for those that are non-funded. Um. But now it's, there would be no contribution from the board at all.
Yeah, which. Is just, um. The link leader stipend that's on here, would that be then a program that went away, or would that also be something that parents could?
I would seek to find uh some part of a grant that.
Um.
That's an amount of money. That's an amount of money I could probably get some portion of damn donation or grant.
Okay, um, for, you know, back to clubs. Could we, you know, given like you said, that we wouldn't be able to do them until they were fully funded. Could we, if we make that decision, could we start the communication on that, you know, end of the school year and in the summer? Cause obviously not everybody that's in Deca is, you know, eighth grade coming in. We have freshmen sophomore and yourself. Could be so that they, you know, so that we could maybe ramp up some of that funding so that they would be able to start at the beginning of the year rather than waiting to put that notice out at the beginning of the year and then start?
But the way typically it happens, September, we see what they're interested. So some of these, some kid, some of this stuff that is in the gets are interested in one year, they're not interested in the next, you know, this is all the same thing. So we can reach out and say, I can provide communication saying, no, my club will not run unless fully funded.
Yeah, or I'm just thinking the, you know, the person who runs Deca can send, can say, what is the interest in, you know, those currents that are currently in Deca this year, are you doing it next year? And would you like to pay in advance? And then possibly that club would then be able to start full on in September. And I, I'm using Deca as an example, but I mean, for every club. Couldn't the person in charge of the club go out to the group that they already have and say we, we're going to be doing this a different way next year. Let's get a jump on it. Who is going to be doing it next year? And.
I mean, we'll try to expedite that as much as we can. There is a process for getting your club approved or getting your club green lighted to move forward. And that process will probably be a little bit more arduous because we will not be able to start the first activity of any club until we collect it. Because the advisors will not contractionally be able to. So we'll try to do forward communications on it. Um, certain things will be much easier than others. For instance, you know, if you have a club of seventy-five kids in it. The chances that, you know, we'll be able to come together with maybe even fifty names, which, you know, uh, is strong, but um you'd have to have, for instance, fifty maybe. Because if you had that many kids, supervision might require a second person, that bitch is like. Uh, the ones that are gonna have the hardest time are gonna be the ones that don't have seventy-five. You know, anything that has, I'm just gonna spitball a little bit here, but you can see them actually. I don't need to spitball. If you look at, that's why I included that tab to try to, you know, as much as I could. So anything that's got five kids, nine kids, four kids, eight kids, ten kids, basically anything south of twenty-five would be a joke. So, I mean, and, and even these, twenty-five, you need to have a solid twenty-five. You know, they can't just be a number that are in it. So the ones that are higher than twenty-five by at least ten would have a decent chance of running again. Anything that's twenty, even twenty-five might not because that twenty-five, some portion of them may not have contributed.
So based on that, I, I also, I, I understand where, you know, especially for our sports. It makes the most sense anyway to have a paid coach because obviously if something comes up, but you know, that person can't do it. We can hire somewhere else where if we're running this by volunteers, who says there's another volunteer behind them that's going to step and take takeover? That's something that concerns me. But like Bill, you know, has offered many times in the meetings. I would be someone who would say, you know, I, I can buy, like, no one wants me coaching a sports team, but I could do like a. I could do like, you know, I would happily do a T I S games club and whatnot. I understand what you're saying about contractually with the teachers. Um, completely. My question, and again, I worry about the soundbikes that can come out of meetings, so I'm not making any promises nor have I asked anyone this question. I'm only asking if that's possible. Couldn't an organization such as a Tep To or Boosters, could they have a, something like a board game club that they could then have a volunteer do so that there would still be the opportunities for this, it would just be run by our volunteer organizations. Again, I, I'm not in a current volunteer organization. I can't make that commitment. I'm just asking, is that something that's a possibility? I'm trying to look for any ways that I can for us to still have opportunities.
What is now called the scouts, you know, it's boys and girls. The scouts can rent. Um, or as a community organization, sign up for one of our rooms and the scouts can have something community, you know, posted in the community and kids can sign up for the scouts and kids can go to room one oh five for the scouting day. So, yes, that is something that can happen. However, if it is in any way a school-sponsored activity with school resources of any kind or any transport, you know, then it's really looked at as a school activity and we'd have to, then Article thirty-eight and things like that from a play. Uh, we can't look like we're deliberately trying to avoid, you know, compliance with that. Um, but if any organization, you know, can offer things and rent rooms, Tep To could seek to rent or, you know, have a room and then run a meeting every Wednesday from that room. And kids would go instead of going to bus, they'd go to that room because it's a program they're running and they went through the F M X, they go building use reserve process. So technically, yes, but, but it can't be that the district is trying to circumvent a contract by offering things to people.
Okay, I understand. And that definitely would not be my intention to suggest in that. That would not be my intention. I just want to do everything we can to make things available for the kids. So if we're going to, if, if we were to, you know, make some of these changes that would um eliminate French at T M S. Will we have an issue um overpopulating Spanish at T M S? Like, will all the kids still have an opportunity to take some Spanish? Will there be enough sections offered so that students can take a language?
We're in the process of working that out, but it looks like the vast majority of kids want to take, we have those, it's just. The thing that takes a hit is the French. There's not many in the bench that shoot.
I know. I just want to make sure we can accommodate. Okay, I think that's all I have right now.
I was not signaling, by the way. Try to turn the lights on.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I have more of a statement than I do have a question on clubs. We saw there's teenagers that can do two kids and we've got those here. While the students are there. So, and then we saw again, with the gentleman, Dave from Bolet. I know, it's astronomical. I mean, I remember that he was saying about his grades and then the club helped him and then then steered him towards an athletics sport in wrestling English. Um, and now he's studying as a student. So I think I appreciate your resource for us. I'm trying to figure that out. I definitely think it's um, yeah, there's some clubs in here that have two two to six kids that have that. But even when we were at the middle school rounds, the gentleman who put together the video. Right? And I think he's in like the jazz club or the, he's a drummer, I think both of it. But then he's also in the video club and then he did stuff at the high school for video for something with the sport. So I want us to just be really cognizant of, again, we just had four students here tonight. Saying what most specific trajectory did fit them for the education. So I know that's on a lot of our radar and I want to keep it on our radar and really try to hone in on that. The co-teaching line, Dr. Willett. You know how we went into the rounds of T H S? Does that affect the co-teaching that we saw there? Is that co-teaching as a whole? Is that co-teaching in time?
It makes it harder for us, but it's not impossible.
So this reduction is co-teaching in whole. So like what we just sat the high school would no longer be.
Well, no, we'll no longer have the partnership with East Con that helps us execute it. So right now, it's a collective, it's shared up because we, we do it. But we do it in partnership with Doctor Dibois and so on. We would have to set, I mean severed the relationship, but we'd have to discontinue that, that uh, work with, with them because that costs us some money and we would be working independently.
Which continues our educators' development.
So they, yeah, we wouldn't have assistance in training people for co-teaching and so on. Um, you know. Where I could scrounge up money, I would scrounge up something if we needed something from them. But this would limit us and what we could do. It wouldn't mean an end to all of the teaching. It just would mean that every, you know, everything here adds somebody, adds a layer to someone's job, some.
Right.
That just puts much more on us, more of it on us again.
Well, my concern was, so like when we, when we were at T H S rounds, we were in a mathematics class freshman year, right? Boy, this freshman. Where you had a mix of students in there, general ed and special education students. There was two educators in there. I don't want to call the, the main teacher and the special ed teacher. The room was so fluid, it wasn't like this person is assigned to this person. It was a very fluid lesson. It was a very fluid uh interaction with the kids, the students together in groups and with the educators. So it wasn't like anybody was getting singled out as special education versus general education. So having that same level set in a educational capacity was huge. And uh, I, I was lucky that I had the opportunity to come during the workday and see it actually happen. So continuing to provide our educators with these tools so that we can help. You wouldn't have known who was who in that classroom. It was phenomenal. It was flawless and seamless. And I would, I would love to see it in more classes and in order to get them that training, you know, it's part, but it's me.
Yeah.
Um, community workshops, I know it's five thousand dollars. Does that eliminate some of our emails that talked about budgetary concerns? Was about our parents paying attention to parents now, what's going on, parents are saying they're gonna do, what's the real impact? So we, I think some of our community workshops help communicate our budgetary scenarios. They also help communicate different things that we're doing in the schools. What does it look like in reducing community workshop?
Not necessarily what you want. That was something that, you know, earlier in process. Um, there are things that we're doing with human services now, um, you know, uh. Yeah, Gillian and um Theresa and Dev, um, they've been awesome to work with. And you might notice that um we did have a community workshop that we shared with them and executed together and that was through grant funding. So it won't mean the end of community workshops. It just means that um things that we might have done for, you know, um. Internet safety.
Right.
With Driscoll, that won't happen because he costs money to bring in. He's one of the better people, but he costs too much uh in this paradigm. We would not bring him in. Um, we might bring in a state trooper who works in a computer crime unit, which would be dead this year too, which he did a great job. I, I brought him and brought him to the public library in Tallinn and I think he did a great job. Um, but he's not, um, he's not the same, you know, but he did a great job. So um, we would look for those kind of alternatives and the scheduling out of it is a little more constrained because they only have a certain amount of availability. So we might not have as many community programs, but you know, I'd still be working to offer them. So would others when we do things in partnership with human services. The Porco Foundation, you know, work we did for suicide prevention, that costs money. So we wouldn't be able to do something like that.
That was a huge, that was widely attended.
Yeah, and there's a parent component, there were kid component, you know, that it's a comprehensive program and most of those cost money, but we would not be doing that kind of comprehensive program next year. We will do programs we could, you know, do with volunteer or low-cost alternatives.
Um, increasing pay to play. Forty thousand dollars. Um, Katie always speaks so eloquently about it, so maybe I'll tear up to talk about it, but we talk about equality and equity. So again, I'll go back to several of our emails and correspondence that we've received or even a lot of the better I can see on social media regarding our struggling families and our retirees on fixed incomes and our families on fixed incomes and, and what have you. But conversely, if we have a family on a fixed income or a struggling family that's in a hard time, can they pay that extra hundred dollars, let alone that initial amount of money for pay to play? So my concern is, is if we're talking about supporting our families in the community on all capacities, increasing pay to play might also eliminate an opportunity for someone in equitable balance. So again, as we're talking about saving dollars, fixed income, struggling families, retirees, different things like that. We gotta talk about them all, right? And so if we start to increase what we're charging our families and our parents, or if we say, if someone wants to chip in another ten or eleven dollars, what if someone doesn't have that ten or eleven dollars? Cause conversely, someone can say, you know, just don't go to Starbucks for the next six months and that's gonna be your increase in taxes and you'll get all these other services. Well, what if I can't afford Starbucks? So, but let's talk about the rhetoric the other way with our students and our families. So again, how many students are we gonna take out of our athletics bar grounds? Bar, and we still continue to have them by increasing the pay to play. So we can have that rhetoric. What was my other question? Community workshops? Code teaching. And then we talked a lot about the M T S S six stipends. What does that put us? Um, Dr. Willett, reducing those stipends with the M T S S.
Forces me to look for alternatives for inviting that M T S S or have to be pulled from grant money or donations, which are a little less predictable. And um you know, obviously if it's not an operating budget item, it has a little more of vulnerability or variability, but I would, I would be doing my best to pull that out of grants or donated funds.
What happens if you don't get that?
We have to figure out how to um you to um execute the M T S S plan. And uh later tonight, one of the links that I have talked about the M T S S plan. So I would have to go to Plan B for the M T S S plan, which is not favorable. But having said that, you know, I do think I can acquire some funds for this. And um, that's why it's on there.
So, but if you're not able to, so it's on a what-if scenario, right? So we talk a lot about, we can't do all of it, what ifs. So this is if you could fund the funding or the grants or those things. That's, that's what if scenario. Again, the multi-tier services, right? So.
Think I can get us through next year, which is also what he has to be looking for. And then I, you know, we would try to bring back into the board budget the next time. But, you know, these, these types of things, M T S S, these are desirable. I still need it. I would be looking to, and I believe I can get some grant funding for that. More by the coming year.
But again, it's a what if.
But those are part of your previous iterations.
Yeah, I know. I, I, but I still wanted to talk about it.
You can do anything, but I'm just saying you, you're speaking about a little time or you want to get to.
Okay. And then I had one more except for I clicked a tab and not the not tab. Um. I'm on the not tab. Oh, here we go. Sorry, I apologize. The P P T facilitator. Now, those folks are neutral parties in our I E P, I O four, support meetings, correct? So they help us guide the meetings.
Yeah, they would take some of these massive number of P P Ts that are just growing and growing and uh, it's not so, this across the state, if you look at any of the data, it's it's just where we're at. And they would also help us with quality and compliance because there's so many of them and they happen so fast and so often. You know, it's not a bad idea to have someone going through all the C T stats records and going, oh, this one's missing this, this one might be missing that. This one doesn't have, you know, signature of this one. Because if you don't have that, sometimes there are issues. And you know, hopefully you don't end up with a huge issue that could cost the district money. From an O C R or legal point of view, and that's what that was trying to do is make sure that there's, you know, as little. Potential issue as possible. However, in a, in a year where you're reducing four million from where you came from. There's not much of a chance of that. You know, that was something to help with compliance right now, going back to what you were saying before. It's like that old thing when you got the, the dishes on the sticks, you know, we've got what we can handle at the moment, that would make it safer. But it's, you know, we can't go backwards from where we are. So that would be better if that is not funded than us going backwards. From who we have now, and that's the situation you're in. You're not in a situation where you're adding this year. You're in a situation where you're controlling your. You know, your spin.
Well, I, I guess my concern would be is that we have legal obligations with five or fours and I U Ps and what we need to do. And this, these people or this role is an integral part of that. And then we're reducing legal services somewhere. I, I just. You know, if something were to happen and then we reduce our legal services somewhere and then we have, I don't know, something can. We could have a hundred thousand dollar charge on a legal for an investigation, maybe or something. I, I don't. So then we're putting ourselves in harm's way of different things with this. It's just concerning that. Any human or any role or any integral part of specifically anything that's. Contractually obligated and legally obligated, right? Let alone just putting ourselves in harm's way. This is my concern.
Yeah, you, anything that you don't do, you know, to control certain things, you take risks on. I would say that. The district has the great benefit right now of having core people in positions where we have been here for a long time. You know, we have the H R people, you know, Suzanne Waters has been here for a long time, knows a lot, has a lot of experience. I've been here for a long time, have had a lot of experience. We are looking to pool all of our experience and do our very best to, you know, to cover. You know, these issues and not use the resources as much as we can. I don't think we'd wanna keep it that way forever, but you know, if you get through a tough spot, I think we're just gonna need to be. Putting in extra time, you know, and making sure that we're controlling it to the best of our abilities. Doctor S uh has been here a whole time. So I would say that if you, if you were losing those people. You know, that have all of these years of collective experience, who absolutely could not even take a chance at not having some of these things. But we have the great benefit, at least for another couple of years, of having. A few of us who have been around here for a very long time. So you can take a chance when you've got that kind of experience. But you would wanna be careful about that over a span of years when those people leave. You know, something would have to be done because they're not going to be around to catch the problem.
Catchable.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. So I'll just start with this pink here, just kinda go down. So, uh. You have the Board of Education septic repair on this list for eighty five hundred dollars. Is this not needed for the uh building, I, I assume?
We're just putting it off.
Is that, why is it we're gonna have further expense down the road or what, what is?
Well, I mean, it's just one of the things that you could potentially put up and we could also resubmit maybe potentially as capital. We have a solution at the moment. It would be. You know, it may be something that at the end of the year, if we cover our one eighty eight in E R F. We could probably, might be able to do that project out of end of year funds. So it's something that is, it's a, it's an amount of money that can help us reach an end, but we might be able to cover if there's any more money to do it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're not putting up repairs for next year. We come around, oh, we have a seventeen thousand dollar repair because we didn't spend eighty five hundred, right?
Right.
Well, that's, that goes to another, you know, you've got a great facility director and knows really what he's doing. So it's mitigated risk, but. You know.
You know, but what is the specific proof there? Do you know or?
Yeah, well, um. So the pressure um and the piping in there, it kinda goes down at an angle that makes it clog. A lot. And when it clogs, none of us can use the bathroom in the Board of Ed Office, which is highly inconvenient. Um, and creates work, workflow issues. So, so what happens is. It gets, if you rate, when the repair will help ameliorate the angle problem. It goes down and the, you know where the propane tanks are, it goes down and down at an angle that is very difficult to clear and they have to keep snaking it. And this would be a more permanent solution to having to snake it a lot whenever things happen.
Yes.
In its short version. There wouldn't be any level.
Uh, T I S uh Language Arts Workbook was ten thousand dollars. Seems like a pretty important learning aspect. How would we be doing without or why are they not needed or what other resources are we gonna use instead of these workbooks for the educational?
We'll be able to cover some of that pre and end of years, the kind of figure that you might be able to live with an end of year.
At the end of this year.
It's not, um, some of these little things might be able to come up, not little. Right now, but they are.
Five of those, you get a nurse, yeah.
They, they may, they're, they're one time type of things. You might be able to get it out of an end of year thing, but it's not, if you keep a position, you keep it in perpetuity. You know, whereas this would be something that is expensive and needed, but then might not be.
Explain, uh, Matisha, what this is, decodable libraries, reduced decodable libraries seventeen plus thousand.
Instead of a set for every classroom that would work with inter reading, they would share. It would be half as many and they'd have to share. You know, different, two brains might have to share the same set. So they would have a little less flexibility in how they're delivering their instruction, more coordination is necessary. Which requires the CIA teams and, you know, and that other people can coordinate it more carefully.
Okay, but we have the resources, we're just gonna be sharing them.
It's a way that in a really tough budget situation.
Oh, no, I understand all that. I'm just, uh, on operational standpoint that we're not, not buying something that we need for.
It frustrates some people to do this.
No, I understand, I understand that. I, I understand. I'm sure all of us frustrate.
Every bit of this frustrates somebody severely.
Oh, I, I know, I'm, I'm. I, I completely understand. I have, it's not about frustrating. I don't wanna frustrate anybody, but to work, have to find solutions and. They also gained just a little touch base on this uh Lexia waggle differential for five thousand.
We talked about Lexia in the past. There's a product called Waggle that might be a little cheaper and do the same thing. So what I've been trying to do in the times, you know, each time we've talked about things and if there was something that we could come up with.
Yes.
That would give us a little bit of a break or a difference. Um, and we have a great, you know, um. We have a great humanities supervisor or administrator. We talked about it and a product called Waggle. So we could dump the Lexia by the waggle and it stayed by.
Yeah, I looked up it a little bit earlier before I came to saving it, because it's on another list.
So it's just, each time we try to work and figure out what else we can do.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not use, losing that resource for students and so. What is the science A to Z program? Sixty five hundred plus.
It's an excellent program used um in the younger grades. Kids acclimated and ready for N G S S, the testing. But it, um, because it covered a lot of the bases, it augments what's going on in the classroom, makes it, you know, more easy for the teacher to differentiate. But if we had to choose between that collectively and positions, it's better to not have that. You know, like if that plus the decodables plus the waggle plus whatever adds up to a person, it's better to get rid of these things than another person.
So, so it's not necessarily, this is more or less for the tech, for the state testing?
Yeah, it, it is a tool to help prepare kids in science or online utilization. You know, using computers online and whatever, but it's not necessary. The way a person would be necessary, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't want us to spend money on just state made testing person.
I mean, it is one of those things that are in G S S, we know it'll stay probably where it is. It's probably not. Gonna do leaps and bounds, but people haven't been that worried about that either. So if there's a place to take a hit.
Uh, I'm just going down the list here if you don't mind. Uh, eight, the, can you, what are the initials? H M H dimensions, twelve thousand dollars.
Uh, Hartford, Harton, Brooklyn Hartford, um, it's part of, um. It's part of the E L A programming, but it's something that we can't, some was in the wrong people here. It's one of the things that is going to probably annoy people, but that we could do our best to work without. You know, um, it's part of the E L A programming. It helps with all of the aspects of, um. You know, preparing them, but we have other options and the inter reading V three has things in it. Or promises to have things in it that will allow us to consolidate some of the things we're doing now. And this is part of it. We're taking a shot at maybe that happening. Taking a risk. Um, but that is something that we could work with next year, you know, and we have other options for covering.
Don't sound too positive on that, but.
It's because we don't even have V three yet. You know, we're taking measured risks on this kind of thing. It's better to get, and when we add those up, I don't wanna lose another E L A person. You don't wanna lose, you know. It's just one of those things that, and I did, it's not like I just took a dartboard and started throwing darts at it. You know, I went and talked to admin and we talked about what we could do, you know, in a desperate situation. Um, and so we came up with these types of things.
Well, I, I can fully understand and I appreciate, so you know, having, uh. The, this list here, um, when I'm kind of put together, someone will can see what we're actually looking at specifically. So thank you. I feel there's a reserve of positions, so. Now, now I wanna go back to the clubs, um. So now you said there's part in the union contract for the club.
I'm sorry, can I clarify something?
Yes.
The H M H is, uh, this, it's more specifically, it's the Science Digital Textbook. But we have part copies.
Uh, H M H dimensions.
Yeah, it's, it, this particular thing is, it's, it is a science digital textbook. We have physical copies. The issue is. It has additional re, digital resources that kids can use at home and it helps prepare us for. The N G S S and so on.
Which grade is this?
This goes to a couple, this is available to kids, I think, two through five or it's quite.
Uh, the younger schools.
But we have the textbooks. It's just, these were digital resources that got kids more prepared for N G S S and all that. So I just wanna clarify, that's exactly what that is.
Okay.
It's digital resources that augment the textbook that we've just not kept.
Well, maybe somebody do some research for us on three sites students can use. Alright. Alright, um. Going back to the uh subsection, which said thirty eight to thirty four, the union contract to the club choices. Uh, it's a sticky point. I'm trying to ruffle my business feathers, but there's a possibility to go. And ask the union. See if there's some sort of alteration that can be made to have, like Jen was saying, like to have these volunteers to where we're not trying to offset them. But we also. You know, we hope that the staff and the teachers would realize that we're in a tough. Cycle of budget here, but we also still wanna provide uh opportunities for children to. Participate in these clubs, but if we're kinda set by the union or not trying to not. Have the opportunity for the, for the union staff to make money, but at the same time, we'll try to still run a community that we're like still in our district. Provide these, you know, uh, opportunities for children. But I don't know how this will go about, but that'll be my option if it can just kind of bring it in a gentle, more economical. Community type sense, which we're in a very tough spot here. Uh, I would, you know, I, obviously it's probably up to everybody here on the board, but that would be a suggestion of mine. We have a few months' time to possibly see what yes or no, they'd be willing to do that for the September. School year. So I don't know how people feel about that. I don't, like I said, I don't wanna ruffle my business feathers, but I think we're in a tough spot here. I don't wanna. Uh, you know, not lose some of these ones that we might have community members who will to step up and. Say, yeah, hey, I'll run the Lego Club. I'll be there every Tuesday for the next six weeks or eight weeks or whatever from. Three to four fifteen to run it. You know, you might have people that step up. Like my wife and I are trying to get a chess club going at the library. The library doesn't want providers, so we're going around. Trying to get names and uh resources to run the club and let them provide the room and. We'll kind of figure it out as volunteers or something for families to do. So hopefully that goes pan out, but it's, I'm trying to get that going. So I'm sure there's other people in the community who's willing to step up. Provide that sort of uh action for their kids. So some of this, like the yearbook clubs, they say if we don't have twenty, the yearbook, we only have tw-. Twelve to fifteen students. Sorry, I'm trying to find the list here. Second, club participation. So according to this here.
Additional fees associated with the yearbook.
Uh, where you see, it does not include costs. I don't see that. Which list is that?
That's sent out to us.
Scroll to the right, it's the, you're talking about.
I'm on the club money does not include cost, boys and support list. Um, I thought the ones that were in yellow are the ones that added up to the thirty thousand here. That are the no fee clubs, but that was not highlighted on my list.
Yeah, I, 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 if it's not highlighted, it's probably not, it would be one that we left.
We have twelve advisors a year for fifty six hundred dollars there. Right? Club money does not include, and here's the line item. Are the yellow ones on this list the ones that add up to the? Thirty thousand nine seventy one? I don't even know what that spreadsheet could also.
Yeah, the yellows are the ones that are the thirty nine seventy one.
And those are the ones that you have in the budget that are, are not going to be erased, correct?
Usually the ones we have to absorb for one reason or another, like advisors or club transportation. That's like the Birch Grove Transportation.
Oh, yeah, advisor sophomore class, senior class, junior class, freshman class, excuse me?
They end up costing more money if you try to do it another way. So those, that's why you see that the reduction is more like one sixteen, cause the one that we.
Oh, I fully understand that. That's why I'm asking the question now. So is the yearbook not going to run because it's not highlighted in yellow in this thirty?
And we can't reflect enough money for it.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah, it doesn't.
It's on the, on, on budget question sixty five, you attached. A spreadsheet. With the club cost breakdown. And that high school yearbook club with twelve to fifteen is listed as a no fees club.
No, unless that, unless she here, it's. Same, there is a fake.
Right, so probably between the two times, what's happening is when I talk about it with the business manager and others, it's one that we will have to charge a fee for now. Because other, like, the Birch Grove Transportation Club. We would not want to try to do differently, but that one, you could probably do it differently. we would not want to try to do differently, but that one, you could probably do it differently.
Uh, okay. Yeah, yeah, you can just add in the fifty-six hundred and the cost, whoever buys a yearbook, the yearbook would just went up. You know, nine dollars.
Like, there's options for ones that, right.
Again, that's sort of.
There is a, there's a method to the madness on this, it's just, you know, it breaks down to a deeper conversation about why on that one, and where else could you get it, and you know, are there other options for funding? Now, so that's why it falls that way.
No, I understand that, but if we're having a money item in here, necessary, maybe necessary, well, what I'm getting at here is if this is still gonna run, then that number isn't necessarily the the proper number, or my my add a what's in there?
What we're essentially doing is saying that of all of these clubs, and the amount that we would spend on them, the one sixteen is what we can reasonably cut and still be able to, within the budget, fund the ones that you need to in order to not spend more. Like the B G P Transportation Club is an, you know, um, it's, it's basically you know, you're kind of looking at it again with some level of risk. You know, because if, uh, people aren't willing to pay for something like that, and it doesn't run, now you gotta find another way to generate yearbook. So, you know, there has to be some discretion involved, and well, we have this amount to play with, and this is, this is where that that funding is gonna go. Uh, for instance, if there's a a club that's necessary for Title IX for some reason, that might be a good idea to find, you know, you know, somewhere on that thirty, you might want to use it for that one. So it's, there's gonna be some maneuverability in here, it's just um, hundred sixteen is a figure that would wipe, unfortunately, wipe out a lot of the board funding for a lot of the clubs. But that's how it breaks down, in this iteration, at this moment in time, when these discussions occur. And that's why the budget process is small. Most of the F I Q stuff is probably months old at this point, so between then and now, it's, well, can we run that without that? Probably, how would we do that? Maybe read out a cost to this? Maybe, you know, that, like, the conversation might happen with a yearbook.
Yeah, no, I'm not grabbing that, that was Bill grabbing that data point, I'm not grabbing that data point in reference to our state. I'm throwing out a positive.
The information that was provided to us.
Yes, this is kind of just, in that sheet that you have, where did we get that one sixteen? Here's where we get the one sixteen, what considerations were part of that? These were part of that tab. It's just trying to show you how that figure was arrived at with this particular iteration of it now, in, you know, the second referendum situation.
Okay, well, I I I, you know, and and some of these, and I I I know some organizations do, but I don't know how many actually do or don't, but I think some of these, you you know, reach out to some people like, uh, like Jen was saying, like engage some interest, like, say the ski club, some of these, you know, groups might even uh, step up, we're we're trying to do fundraisers on their own, you know, to 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 provide some of these. And like, even for this S A T prep that we're supposed to be covering for thirty-six hundred dollars. Uh, and it's something that you get, that we actually charged the money for the S A T prep and don't actually put this thirty-six hundred in the budget here, but we actually have the people want to sign up for the S A T prep and pay a fee, and put that into to for, uh, uh, some other resource that we can use in in the budget. And the other question, um, the, uh, advisor for eighth grade, is there a reason why there's three advisors for just for eighth grade? And you have the freshman, junior, senior, and sophomore advisors are only having two advisors?
I I, off the top of my head, I don't know.
No, no.
I would have to go back and look, but it probably has to do with something like, um.
That's another two thousand.
There's a number of activities, and there's the Washington trip, and I don't know if they.
Well, that's a different, those are four line as for the Washington.
Right, so I don't, in eighth grade, I know there's a lot of stuff they do, I'm not exactly sure why there's three, I have to look, but that's taking from what we had budgeted for previous years, I'm not sure why. You'd be, you would be, um, yeah, I I would say, I don't know, I have to look.
I was saying, we'd claw back two thousand dollars if we can, just everyone just have two advisors instead of three, like, there's fun.
Can I end it that real quick?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Class advisor point, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I didn't notice it before now, um, when I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Willey. When we did the whole class office stuff and all these things, who's your class advisor? Mrs. Hill ran all of that, it was just her, and so I only recall one known class advisor for our class, and then I believe, uh, Mrs. Erickson and Mrs. DeGuire, they were in eighth grade with with me at the time, um. You know, they were sort of leaders for the Washington trip and all that, so are these, so that they might be categorized into maybe the club advisor for Washington trip, but not advisor for eighth grade, where, that is a good, it's a good question, where are these other two?
Well, first of all, when, when these kind of things come up like this, typically they come up this way because at some point or another, some workload conversation probably occurred, and somebody pointed out that the number of hours to execute all these things was more than in the contracts allocation for the club at that compensation level, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So then you have to add another, if you want to, you know, have those people involved, and if they're not involved, you have to scale back what you're doing, because people only, there's this fixed amount of time that is allocated. Or if you look at that contract, it says, you know, there's this many hours for this kind of thing at this thing. So if there's three in there, it's because at some point or another, there was some kind of conversation about, well, I can do this, but I can't do all this, you need to get someone in here to do this. Having said that, you're at nine twenty-three, and really what we're doing with clubs here is, you're just not funding, you know, you're you're reducing a hundred and sixteen of the of the board's funding for the clubs. So.
I understood the time.
I understood, I understand, going up short of my time.
This is here is just.
Everybody had a chance.
Understood.
I I I I think this is very important to all of us here, I don't know how many people came to the town council meeting.
Your next question.
Wrote in letters, did everything here, I think this is, uh, uh, one of the most important things that we're discussing.
Then let's continue.
So I I I think that we need to dig in, now, obviously not at, not at nine twenty-three, but I think.
Continue with the next.
No, I'm not finishing my statement. I think we need to dig in and find out specifically what these advisors for eighth grade, what all of these people are doing, just to ensure that these are being fulfilled by people and what the actual task is. He says that there's work being done, and he's unsure of what the specific work is for each one of these, two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, sixteen, sixteen, two thousand, two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-four, sixteen, sixteen, that we should get some answers to this. Everybody had a time, I don't like when people do that.
Right, I'm just saying, let's, let's continue with your time.
Well, I, and I'm actually not suggesting, what you're saying is unimportant, what I'm saying is there is a fixed amount you're spending on clubs, and you're, you know, you're reducing it by that one sixteen here. So I can come up with the answers to why there's three. But in order to reach a budget figure, you're gonna probably have to take a chump or somewhere, and this is just a recommendation to you guys respectfully, that this is where you take.
Understood.
Because of options you have. Other options you have for it.
No, that, I I'm done, Tom.
You did?
Not, not really, but dog, I'm done. Okay.
So, and and I just have one comment, uh, as I look through the recommendation, and then take two, uh, as related, as related to table three, uh, I think you mentioned earlier, uh, it's a risk. You know, there are a couple items in here where we're not necessarily betting the farm, but we're, we're relying upon experience and probability. Uh, for example, some of the the legal questions with special education are highly dependent what happens, the the students that come, the questions that arise, the P P Ts that happen, uh, where we can make our best guess, but until it happens, we really don't know. One question I had, there's a two percent increase for, and then has an alphabet soup uh, right there in the pink underneath the the yellow, is there? Wh- what are those? Are those programs, are they?
Where'd you ask about Tony?
Just so I can follow. It's, uh, line forty-nine. J forty-nine on table two, thank you.
All right, that is limiting those individuals to a two percent increase.
Okay.
You save that amount of money by limiting those individuals, the people in those position classes to two percent.
Yeah.
Which would not be, you know, if there's, again, there is a risk to doing that. Keeping the market competitive, keeping those people here. You know, that type of thing.
Right, right. Okay, and and, you know, the the comment was just to mention, you know, we're we're looking at a list that has about ninety-four different items, uh, and to to your point, as we've gone iteration by iteration, you know, the the first one is at the blue, we reduce the things that we thought we needed to to advance the district. We came back, the next color, we started reducing, you know, the people and the programs. You know, not not necessarily low-hanging fruit, but these, we're 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 taking away the low-hanging fruit, now we're at the stuff, or we're having to make some the septic system, uh, which gets incredibly unpleasant if that acts, so we're taking a bet. My my point in being is that, you know, I look at this and I look at table three, and I see table three not necessarily as things we could swap in. But if our assumptions in table two, if one or two of them happen to lean a little bit towards the bad side, we could find ourselves in table three anyway. Uh, so that that ends up being a bit of a a buffer, uh, albeit an unpleasant one. Uh, I I think we go back to the point where the the expectation, of course, and I think you articulated it well, was the staff, that the district is gonna do everything they can to find you know, pennies under couch cushions to try to limit the effect of some of these items. Although from a budget perspective, we have to say, here's the number we have, and how do we, but what's our goal for doing that, so. And I kind of recognize all the conversations that we've had and all of the the clarifications to point out that, you know, these ninety-four items, while they significantly represent an attempt to keep staff, it still affects staff. Uh, it affects art students, it affects the health of our kids, it affects the big safety conversation as far as social workers, people, um, the, the S R Os, the the person out there watching the buses, uh, we're reducing the bus numbers on here, so the parent standing outside, their kid comes a little bit later. All of these things, there there's not a person in the district that is going to avoid being touched by these ninety-four items. Recognizing that is what we have to do, and it's an absolutely terrible thing that we have to do. My caution, and and just for everybody, the people in here, the people on the phone, uh, is to assume that all we have to do is get through this next year. Uh, it's something we said last year. Uh, and we start reducing some of these things, we have to do so, recognizing the fact that we are very quickly eroding what we have. Well, well, it could be, so, just want to make sure that we're all kind of aware of that. Okay. So and and I thank you for pointing out the time, but what I want to do now is give everybody a quick opportunity or that would like to to have a go back.
Well, I was only doing that to say to get close to ten, I didn't.
I appreciate anything else by that.
Before we go around, is there a reason why we're not screen sharing, is it just for?
Well, the, this is your tool. This is, uh, until you make a decision, hopefully tonight.
We discussed that.
When you make a decision tonight, I will take everything and put it into a doc that that is published.
That is your decision.
Until what approves a set of reductions. We didn't approve a set of reductions last meeting, and one was posted. So that statement that you just made is inaccurate, but.
I'm talking about live right now, with our participants being able to follow along with our conversation.
It is.
I I'm looking at a million documents, and like, I know what Brian was. And I was looking at the wrong page when you were sending that inside line in yellow, and I was in a different document, and I'm seeing the document, so again, I I I just didn't know where we were.
Yeah, that was, that was a decision that was wrong.
Interesting.
Well, and, uh, this is everything. Whereas what was being talked about prior was what you already mentioned in your minutes. Anything sent out.
I was talking about last meeting.
Right, but anything, I mean, I'm just saying, the stuff you've put out there is, but you've already talked about in minutes. This stuff is literally everything.
So. Would anybody like, I'm asking for a go back. Yeah. Go, go. Um, is there any precedent? I I know a lot of our salaries are union contract. Is there any precedent for doing a a wage freeze?
Well, contracts mean you can't just freeze it, except unless you're talking about of non-contract employees, which should be the two percent type people that you're looking at there. You can ask.
Have we ever done that?
Yes.
And what has the outcome been?
Mixed. I I don't think there's an appetite for that anymore.
When was the last time we did it?
Few years ago, but the context of things have changed dramatically. You know, so to give you, you know, a general idea of how someone might view this in a bargaining unit, maybe tasked years ago, not president, I asked them once or twice, did it? But then, um, things happened to that bargaining unit anyway, regardless of whether that was done or not, the bargaining unit would probably not look at doing that again ever. Plus, they also lose years on their retirement, it was a magnifying factor multiplier on their retirement if they do that, because now you're not making the, you know, if you skipped two years of that, you're not making those tiers anymore, and they weren't made up anywhere else, there was nothing that happened to make that better, so they're less likely to go that direction again. I'm just speculating, um, something like teachers, um, teachers' union, you know, they're, they work really, the teachers work amazingly hard, like all the other staff. You know, recently, um, you know, there's fewer clubs and activities, they're not, that's not income they're making with their bargaining unit uh, through negotiations. You know, it, uh, it's a really good indicator of what, where you're at. It's when you go into negotiations and you have a settlement, where is that settlement in the spectrum of settlements at that time? Ours is typically average or below, and that's what it was last time. So for a bargaining unit getting an average or below percentage increase, while they're not going to be getting income from clubs or activities or any of these other things, is already going to probably be looking at it as uh, those are losses of opportunities for them. So why would they give up anything else? You know? And there, and the, and sometimes people will look at it and say, well, look, there's all these steps, and, uh, we're gonna publish a random step sheet and say, look, everybody gets paid. It has to be looked at in the context of the state. Where are the teachers with respect to how everybody's paid in a state? Where are the teachers with respect to how the bargaining unit at negotiations, you know, finished, are they way above, way below, at average? And our settlements have been average and below average for that compensation, so our teachers are not ridiculously paid, and in in recent years, there's things that they're not getting paid for anymore. Um, so that.
So this reduction list that we have, where does this set us up for next year? Does it put us in any, are are we putting a foot in front of each other, or are we just continuing to take steps back?
Well, I mean, I I think we're reacting to, um, you had a seven-three-four, that you're getting to a one-four-six, and you have ten years, twelve years of these one-point-sixes, you know, as an average, so it's hurting you. It's absolutely hurting you.
Are we looking at more reductions next year?
I don't know what next year's budget will be. I'm doing everything I can to prevent that, I think a lot of us are, we have all of the people working in this district are trying to prevent that, you know, with the LEAPs and the T T As and the open joints, and, you know, all these things that we're trying to do. We're trying desperately to prevent it, we're dealing with budgets that have been, on average, lower than what it takes to maintain your services, so that's what you're struggling with. And so I hope so, I hope not, I hope next year's three percent or higher.
And then just really quickly, um, I know there's certain clubs, and I'm actually gonna gear this sort of toward you a little bit, Rage Robotics is one of those clubs that doesn't necessarily operate as a T H S club, it's an external club that is based to spec- The space out of town, so what's the difference in in terms of, they don't get any board of bed funding, they don't get any, they just get the space, correct?
So they. Rage does what we talked about before, they they're a partner, but they have building use stuff and, you know.
Yep, fill out the permit.
And they actually have kids from Ellington and all around, and it's it's not strictly, we. We are a partner with them and like boys, yeah, we house them and, you know, there's a room they rent or whatever. Or get, but they're, we're not, um, they're not a school sponsored activity per se.
She mentioned the, you know, students coming from Ellington and whatnot, and this is just something to consider, you know, down the road and whatnot. I'm curious how many of these clubs out of that one fifteen thousand and whatnot, um. Could, I guess, go into that model, DECA is not one of those, so I'll I'll just tell you, just from what I know. Um, but a rage robotics where, again, you're meeting, how often do you meet for those types of clubs, is it a weekly meet, or is it a monthly meet, or is it a during season? There'd be three times a week. Three times a week, so that's, those are opportunities for us to bring in, I'm sorry, offer things that other towns might not, you know, and 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 and. And make it, um, a little bigger that way, and maybe that's how you bring in some external revenue, I don't know. Um, it just made me think, because Rage does operate differently from a deck, from a student council, from this and that, and so. Um, in terms of how much of that one fifteen could we get back if we just expanded those ideas a little bit? I'd be curious, that's not a this year problem, unfortunately, it would be, um, more so next year, but, um. I just wanted to get that clarified, I just wasn't sure, as I wasn't sure if there was something that we could currently do, um. And then I do have other questions, but they're from, they're from whatever, so, um, I will get those answered elsewhere. That's all.
Um, I just have one question, and that is, why are there no totals on this? Couldn't we really lay down a total on the purple, the total on the red, total on the total, something? No totals except for in table three, and this is why I asked.
Well, table one has. Yeah, that's where the totals are, it's table one.
Oh, yeah, okay, but but I mean, these different, these different iterations, okay, I mean, okay.
Recule it on the dashboard, and the the other piece is now you have some, you have been talking.
I didn't see that part.
Yeah, yeah, well, and and just as an aside, some of you have been talking about some of the things that were done in the past, I mean, technically, you can do what you want here, it's just. You've already done some things that you've published or talked about.
Was that any free?
Yes.
Uh, anybody else would like to go back? Thank you, Dr. Willitt, I'll entertain a motion to move this to board action. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Discussion? All right, your motion is to move this into board action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jayden?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Right, Dr. Willitt, that is moved into board action, item N two. Okay, board action, item N one, food service meal increase. Dr. Willitt, if you could be so kind and show those. Up here. Okay. Somewhere in here.
So the, uh, the proposed motion is there at the bottom.
All right. We'll entertain the motion. Motion, oh, go ahead, go, no, it doesn't matter, I'm sorry, motion to approve the school lunch price increases as recommended by the superintendent of schools. And as proposed in agenda item L one of the May twenty eight, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second.
Is he, uh, Bill seconded it?
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Rainey?
Hi.
Brian? Bill?
Hi.
I, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dr. Willitt motion passes, now that will take effect at the beginning of next school year?
Yes.
Moving on. Board action item M two. I will entertain the motion to accept. The reductions as listed in table two, let's remind it's any modifications. So I'll second it. Discussion? Just a clarification, just to clarify for anybody following along here. Although they don't see the table, never mind, it's approved to look at table two, we're at reducing from table two. Yes, and your motion was answered, so you're right.
Yeah.
So this be a time where if I didn't agree with that, I would say what my thoughts are.
Yes.
Okay. Then can I talk?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
My thoughts are, and I'm also trying to think of this year, I'm also trying to think of years to come. Would be to. That IT para educator position into the reduction list and use that twenty seven thousand dollars to bring back stuff. To bring back.
Oh, you said stuff.
Stuff, to bring back some some things.
I'd bring back the nurse. Twenty seven.
It just seemed to me that when getting a description of what that IT position did. It it seemed to me that that. Would be a little bit easier to cover than some of the items that we're losing. So that be my thought.
Further discussion?
I'm confused. Where's the? I know we talked about the IT.
He's talking about taking it out of here, putting it in there.
And I'm not talking about the specialist.
Right, so where's the?
Yes.
So this is one restore programs or?
Well, I'm open to that discussion, I'm I'm just saying that move that twenty seven thousand dollars into column two. And I'm open to discussion about moving. You know, I like the nurse idea, you know, finding, you know, a way to to bring that position back or. Or other, you know, I I even see funding the the co-ops. You know, the the summer custodian, we heard from the custodians how important that position was. So, you know, I'm open to that discussion, but, you know, my initial thoughts were. To to move that to the reductions.
So, so, um. Go ahead, Jen.
So, my concern with that is twofold, which will lead me to a question, one, it's a, it's a, it's a person. Two, when you were explaining it, Dr. Willitt, you said that there are three. Current IT specialist, it's just, I guess, I'm I'm not opposed to looking at any of these things, my concern is, is that. A heck of a lot in our school system of business runs through computers and programs. And things I use in touch every single day, uh, like Power School, and I'm sure most people are using that bus app every single day. I don't know where all this falls in, but I want to make sure that. There's no programs, especially the ones that parents need to touch to know what's going on with their kids or their kid's safety, would be in jeopardy. If we don't have enough technical people in our district, our district just feels really big to have only three IT people. So if there was three IT people and a para educator. You'd have to go back to the numbers, but I guess I just want some understanding on what a, further understanding if we're gonna make an amendment to what these people do. And some kind of assurance that the programs will still run as necessary.
Well, the. So, I mean, that job provides support for all the other staff, as you know, you know, and so that these people will be, you know. Unable to go forward with the things that, until somebody of the remaining three people can get around to help them. And the remaining three people all are tasked with various, you know, responsibilities, right? So it takes a while, that's why that person's there, it's taking a very long time. So, you know, if you are going to make that a cut, that does not save a position by itself. So other cuts will have to be made in addition to it, you know, so if you're bringing back the. Nurse, you know, that twenty seven won't cover that, the war will have to be reduced, so. So I tried to, you know, I grade out a couple of things that that's thirty six, one thirty. You know, we would be nine thousand shy, so if we took the. That IT para educator training and the P S, the SIS support ad report stuff, which will affect operations a bit. That would be thirty six, one thirty. Um, we'd still have to, we can cut those, but we have to find nine somewhere, and that can be, I can work with that if you want. I can try to find the nine. I I can increase the amount that we take from legal, but I'm really worried about that, you know, those are the things, there's no place to get that nine, that's easy. That's the problem with trying to replace an entire.
Can I respond? If I remember in in one of our, in the, in one of our conversations, don't we use a lot of, um, students? To do stuff IT related?
Summer, there's a lot of kids.
In the summer.
But they they're, they do like. There's a, they do a tremendous amount, they they won't be ready, they do all the manual things for all the machines in us, the whole district.
Right.
We just sort of, these individuals that are during the year. Put their fingers in the holes, so to speak, but in the summer, that's when all the updates happen, all the cleaning out happens, you know, um. That's why they are crucial.
I mean, I I I also, you know, thinking of that twenty seven thousand dollars, that's, you know, multi-tier support system was. You know, we had all talked about that that was, uh, an important thing, and I I think we didn't like losing it, but. That's three stipends right there to, you know, help with the the MTSS.
You can.
Um, and you know, and I, I don't know where, what we would pull back, I'm just saying that. You know, we're we're, that's one thing that I would say that we're losing a lot of program. And not that we can, it's never good to lose people, uh, none of this is easy. Um, but I'm I'm thinking about where can we save some programs, um, that we're losing out on.
So you could, you could put the twenty seven in as a cut and cut less of the MTSS. In front of that that way, um.
Jen? Yeah, I would say, I, I appreciate the. The idea of sort of swapping and and getting some programs back, I'm gonna try to stay as consistent as I possibly can, since I started being on this board. As many people as we can keep in the buildings as possible, you could take away my, my calculators and our homework bins at work, you could take away my. You know, computer for the afternoon, you can take away, the hope is that I can still. Me do a job and care for the child and this and that, this job specifically, the difference between this one, the para educator, IT para educator and the specialist. From what I understand, true, very different things, the specialist doing a lot of the data-driven, uh, work, uh, to oblige by the state's standard. This person, and again, Jen just sort of pointed it out, um, with the, what is it, there's three, there's three, there's three of these people, there's three of these. Uh, I, the three IT people, um, across the district, we eliminate one, I think, Dr. Willitt, you mentioned before the time to travel between. You know, how quickly can I get my computer to work so I can show my lesson on the SMARTboard today, you know, it's things like that, that, you know. I I I I want to be cognizant of, if we don't have the program. You know, eh, there's alternatives to those, if we don't have the resources to teach or to, or the, or the. The the people to help us teach, um, there's no such, there's there's no class, there's, we can, I can't run my lesson if I don't have the materials I need. For that list, and so, um, but again, for these programs, there are alternative programs, like the waggle, was it called, waggle, waddle, waddle, waddle? Um, you know, so, and eh, to your, to your point about sort of swapping it in for something else. My initial thought was, let's take the, um, IT para out, put back the, um, nurse. Nurse position in the point seven, the problem is, there's a gap of about what, twenty five hundred dollars, whatever it is. So now we're looking at something along the lines of like the Microsoft trainings and the Power School, and we've gotten rid of so many of these trainings already that. I'm, again, now we're affecting how staff are able to do their job, and so I think it's a fair. Ask to to bring that over, um, where I'm at though right now is is is. Again, I I we're losing, I did I did a tally over here of how many people we're losing, and it's kind of jaw dropping, jaw dropping, um. Relative to the programs that is also jaw dropping, so right now, I would not necessarily be in favor of moving that. Para IT para educator, um, over into the reductions list as of right now. If we have another reform, random failed and we're forced, our our hand is forced, then those are discussions that we can have down the road, um, but. I'm happy to talk about whatever anybody wants to talk about. So the thing that, and and my point, and I'm on board with with kind of what Jayden was saying there, um. You know, I looked through this list of reductions and I see, we're talking about reducing, uh, upgrades to the Promethean boards. We're talking about reducing upgrades to the Windows computers, we're talking about reducing, you know, IT iPads. We're reducing certain programs that work together and replacing them with programs that should do the same thing, but are cheaper, uh, cheaper. Costs, uh, we're looking at not filling certain vacancies, certain para type of things, uh, the point of all that to be. Is that we are going to have an increased reliance on aged electronics and equipment. Uh, I think the number of times that a teacher has to call and have their, you know, their their internet reset or their their PC. Fixed or those ankle biter type of things that are hard enough to do when you're sitting by yourself, but impossible to do when you're trying to watch twenty one kids and keep things. Moving, um, having that resource that can get in there, that can get up and going and get them back to normal operation is 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 gonna be a deal breaker. Uh, I think it's going to end up, well, you know, MTSS obviously is is critical, it's something we want to say. I think if we don't have the IT resources there to keep things going, we're gonna see more of a degradation than we can say, so. Uh, I think the IT staff is something that has to be watched and it has to be.
How long have we had that? Go ahead, Jen.
I just was gonna say that I, I really appreciate you trying to bring something like MTSS in, like, I hate even. This is just awful, right, this is just really hard and. You know, I, so I just don't want you to think or or anyone is, as this continues, like. I I, you make a, you make a suggestion like that and I want to jump all over it, but then. The other part of me doesn't, doesn't want to for what I said, what Tony, Tony just made an excellent point about the aged equipment, I hadn't even thought about that, and that it's someone's job, so. I just, I hope people understand that we're between a rock and a hard place and, um. But I really do, especially, you know how I feel about MTSS, so I really do love that you just tried to bring that back, and I just wanted to make that statement, it's like. You know, it's just so hard to be in this position right now and try to juggle things, and I honestly want to look up and say, I don't know. I really don't know, but yet I know that I was voted in here to make decisions and. Every year, these decisions just keep getting harder and and harder, so that's all I.
How long have we had that IT para educator position in?
It's been a couple of years.
And you say couples, couple is too few is.
I I I'm estimating, I, it all blends together for me, it's not been ten years, probably in the zone of five or three or, you know, five. It's a, it's definitely not been something as long as ten.
I'm sorry to keep that, I'm sorry, uh, so what happened before that role, before that role was created, who was solving the problems, who was?
We used to have ed tech coaches deployed in every building, there was a stipend for them, and there there were, uh. They were the ones who handled it, but then they got caught.
So that just fell off.
So then, then it was, we were having major problems because they weren't able to get to people and probably, you know, they were crying, and that was the solution to that.
So we cut ed tech coaches, somewhere along the lines, added an IT para educator.
We cut the ed tech coaches and the, um, ET IT person. There was a teacher who was also helping with that, that wiped out years ago, so all of these, these coaches and this person. Were wiped out from budget perspective, and then. That person was brought on here somewhere to help cover the holes that were created because of all that. So the motion on the floor is as written. Is there any other discussion before we go to now? All right. Jayden.
I. Rainey.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill. What am I? Jen. Dana.
Ray.
Katie.
Hi.
All right, Dr. Will, motion passes. Great. I'll publish this list to the Board of Ed's budget page. Perfect. All right.
I'd like to make a motion, go past ten. I just think we're getting too close with.
You are absolutely right. Is there a second?
Oh, seconded. That hurt.
Any discussion? All right, Jayden.
I.
Rainey.
Nay.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Forcing my hand, Maggie. Jen. Dana. Katie.
Hi.
Motion passes. I do want those cookies. Um, so public participation, two-minute comments must be limited to items on this agenda. Again, if you're in the room and would like to speak, please raise your hand. I will find you. If you are online, please raise your Zoom hand. As always, please start with your name and address for the minutes. Second time. If you're in the room, please raise your hand. If you're online, please raise your Zoom. Uh, Noah Fields.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, we can. Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Noah Fields, Steve Beach Road. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions or comments. Um. Just regarding the clubs and advisors that if we go down the path of the mentioned twenty five minimum paying participants to run a club. Um, at the current club fee right now, that's twenty forty bucks per participant. Um, that comes out to a thousand bucks, but. Most of our clubs in the contract are run at three percent, which is twelve hundred and six dollars, or clubs such as Deca, N H S, or five percent, which is two thousand and eleven dollars. Or clubs like Yearbook, like you said, are above that. Where is the additional? Money getting subsidized from, or you're asking students to pay the difference? So for example, like. Drama um or Yearbook, which you said is fifty six hundred or sixty five hundred dollars, that comes out to about two hundred dollars per student for like a twenty five or thirty. Person person club, which would jeopardize a lot of these clubs from running, from being. Too expensive because we have a lot of students at the high school that are multi-club or play sports and do clubs. So we're putting a very financial burden and barrier on them, which will prohibit the club from running or sports running. Um. Additionally, like you said, Yearbook, if students are paying for that and they do not sign up and there's no club stipend for that, or the student's not gonna have a yearbook next year. Um, first things like that. And the last one was just that. Um, some other things that fall under like class officers, the people in charge of prom, class day, class night, where is that funding? Coming from and such stuff such as chaperones and security also fall under the stipends article. So where is that funding also coming from? Thank you, Noah.
Thank you, Noah. Would anybody else like to speak? Rebecca Risley.
Hi, uh, Rebecca Risley, one oh three Mountain Spring Road. Um, thanks for giving me the time to speak. I I didn't prepare anything because. I don't even know what to say at this point. Um, I have a sophomore. Um, looking ahead at the next two years of having. For myself personally, but for the entire town. These these cuts are insane. Um, as you all know. And uh, um, especially around the clubs, I I there's a few things to keep in mind. I think, you know, there's a lot of parents out there who. Maybe can't afford these increases, but won't raise their hands and say they need help. And there's gonna be kids that miss out. There's gonna be kids that are not gonna know how to go and get the help for themselves or to ask for help. Or to um get assistance. There's going to be so many kids that you don't even realize. That are gonna fall through the cracks and that's on this town. And they don't see it now. They're only looking at their own personal situations. But they're gonna see it in the next year to five years. The deterioration of the schools. And the negative impacts on these kids. Is going to be palpable. And I know I'm speaking to people who are doing their best. I see that. I appreciate that. I just needed to speak up and put something on record because I'm not on any of the Facebook groups, the open discussion. Discussing this or any of that stuff. But this is. This is so detrimental to our kids, just so detrimental. And I just needed to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason.
Jason Philbin, eleven Harvest Lane. Uh, first, I just wanna say it's a sad day for Talon. Uh, but I did, instead of focusing on just all that negativity today, uh, this is a tough day for everyone to swallow. Uh, I did wanna thank everybody on the board and the super for all the hard work you guys do. Uh, today was a tough job, so thank you very much.
Jason. Anybody else? All right, thank you all. Point of information, maybe from the board like to make a comment.
So I don't, I don't have the exact figure, but what I think it is, so. Um, and Dr. Will, I don't know if you know this, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but um I believe that. The reduction, uh, the referendum reduction from a two percent to a one point five. I think that cut the Board of Ed an additional like two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I'd have to do the math, sure, but.
Okay, so in in total. The Board of Ed has been reduced six hundred and seventy three thousand and three hundred and nine dollars, and that's just from. The original vote from the town council. That's not for people, right? So the reason why I'm making this point, and it's important for me to do it publicly too, is that um. I've seen some things that have been set to me online where. There are, you know, people explaining that this drop from two percent to one point five percent overall for the town. Is only gonna save them a dollar or eleven dollars a month. So I get that. And we can't put ourselves in anyone's shoes of what they can and they can't afford. But I do believe um Council Beauty did a good job at the town council meeting when she talked about framing. And so this is my opportunity to at least frame this to the public, that even though that they have only saved you one dollar. Or eleven dollars or three dollars or whatever the cost may be. It has required us to to cut almost another quarter of a million dollars from the school district. And that's just the fact. And overall, we're cutting, you know, over a half a million dollars. From where we were. This six seventy two, three ninety, or I'm sorry, but the increase from last year from the Board of Ed right now is six thirty nine. Six hundred and thirty nine thousand and one hundred and three dollars from our last year's budget. That doesn't even cover one of our fixed costs. It it doesn't cover our insurance. Our insurance costs loans a million dollars, doesn't cover our transportation. So year over year, this just requires us to keep reducing and and reducing and reducing. And I understand that that's the position we're in, but again, I think it's important that we bring it. Um, we talked about a lot of things tonight that, you know, I said last time. They they're very concerning. I really appreciate what Dr. Will provided us. I think he is doing everything he can and 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 the people he's working with in the district to turn over every stone that we can. But there are still, as you described it, I wrote it down and you said it, measured risks. And I'm not one to beg for trouble and I don't say a lot out loud. But even the things that we've done tonight. Makes me worry about things that could happen in our schools and us being prepared for it. Physical, mental. Things with our staff. We are, we are getting to a very detrimental place. And I know that we all know this, and the reason why some of us, you know, had moments tonight is because we all care care very much. There's not one person here that wanted to take away the things that we just did. I am going to do what I can to push this referendum. As I have, social media, parents, whatnot. I'd like to request that everybody listening and everybody here in this room does that as well. I am not telling you to tell people how to vote. We all know people that are different walks of life. I'm really, really frustrated for lack of using more eloquent words about the Democrat versus Republican. The seniors versus kids, we're a community. Let's just vote. Let's get more than thirty percent of people out there to vote. Let's do whatever we can to tell people to vote so that we know that people are are. Honestly providing us with an answer here. I think that's it. I I I just, I I I hear what um. I hear what one of our community members just said, this this is really devastating. Um, I think it gets more and more devastating every year. I think that there are a lot of people who try to undermine. The de- devastations that we do. Um, because we try our best to save people and it's like if there's that bodies littered on the floor, then no one thinks that. We're really, really making huge um, taking huge measured risks here, and we are. And we're taking people away from our kids. And then every time you take people away from our kids, there's less people to handle certain situations. Um, and we're taking things away and um. Programs and we're not instituting things that we really should be, but um. But anyway, please, please, if you're listening, if you watch me on YouTube, if you read the minutes, please encourage everyone that you know to vote.
Katie, I saw your hand was up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Tony. I put it down because I genuinely dislike so much repetitiveness, right? Like we. But I I mean, I will go ahead and say that Jen is absolutely right. There's only one way out of this. And that's for people to vote. That's for more people to go vote for themselves, for the community as a whole. Before I joined this board, I I can't say I was super diligent about voting in referendums or watching any of this or. Eh educating myself, right? But now I, you know, it's really, I'm disgusted with myself for the fact that I genuinely had no idea. That this is how this was working in our town. I'm watching things that we're losing that have helped my student who's a junior now and, you know, inducted into the National Honor Society. You know, through the work of the teachers in this town, that's where she's at, the nurses in the town, counselors disappearing. Um, I'm frustrated that other kids in the district won't have the same supports. But there's nothing the people in this room can do about it. Dr. Will has provided us with excellent guidance. Um, it's done the best that he can to come up with, you know, a really good budget in a in a terrible, horrible situation, which I very much appreciate. Um, and like Jen said, I don't think there's anybody sitting in that room right now or me sitting at home who likes the fact that this is where we're at. So I'm not sure what we do, but I think everybody's agreeing, we don't really love that this is the budget that we're passing. So maybe together, we think about how we can make sure the referendum passes this time so we don't have this conversation again. Thank you.
Any other comments? And I guess.
I'm saying one then.
Dana, please.
Thank you, Jen, for what you had to say. And I know that my vote was different than several people in this room and my vote is. And typically, you know, you know, I feel it's my job to vote, right? Like I was elected to make a decision, not abstain, say yes or no, yay or nay. And although Dr. Will, as Jen put it, New York Katie, I can't remember, uh, put the best budget he could possibly put for it based on. Where we are currently. I can't in good conscience say yes, a yay, when there's six plus people, humans. Been cut, like I can't have it. But now. Conversely, do I say yes? Because this is the best we can do right now because of the two failed re- referendums, probably, right? Um, I just, there are so many things that are, and and the woe is me and the sky is falling and all that rhetoric. The reality of it is, is there's a lot of, lot of stuff. There's a lot of teachers, there's a lot of administrators, there's a lot of programs, there's a lot of personnel, there's a lot of curriculum. There's, I mean, we might as well go back to chalkboards. I really think, I appreciate Jen, you know, there's so many parents proudly posting how they're gonna vote in or or not vote or. Do whatever. There's plenty of thirty percent is deplorable. It's pathetic. Um, the reality is, I don't think people really know, but when all sports go and all clubs go. And that lacrosse mom or that football dad or that Deca parent or whatever, when that's actually gone, like the threat. We're not threatening that it's going away. We don't have the funding, it's gonna go away. Because Dr. Will is not gonna be able to be more creative anymore. To save the the S R O that the town should be paying for. It's a, it's a position that's not filled yet. But if they, we want safety, it should be from the town, right? This rhetoric of veteran or the, you know, the re. Our 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 retiree community, retirement community, or the senior center versus the kids versus whatever in the community, well. Let's be, let's be honest here. We're not gonna have a school system. We're not gonna have a rec center. We're not gonna have a senior center. People keep voting down a budget and not paying for anything. The reality of it is, when I started paying for gasoline for my car, it was less than a dollar. I may be aging myself, but gasoline's never gonna be a friggin' dollar again, and I'm never gonna pay the same amount of taxes on my car, on my sales tax. On my um food, any of that. I don't want my taxes to go up. My taxes would make most people vomit who live in, who are in this room. I'd probably pay higher taxes than most people. Sorry, maybe not. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. My point is, or maybe not other people. You know, the people that they say have these, these houses or these this or these that. Like, I'm sick of the BS online. I'm sick of the divisiveness. I have neighbors that are from all different walks of life and we can talk about. Democrat and Republican and we're respectful to each other. Let's be respectful as a community, but the reality of it is, if this does not pass and this stuff and the woe is me junk that people are saying, the Democrats say the sky is falling. Well, you wanna be honest with you, there is so much stuff that's gone away from the school. We're not gonna have French. The childcare thing program doesn't exist at the high school anymore. Those are programs gone since I've been on the Board of Ed. I can go on and on and on. And Brian, I know that you got, I appreciate your passion today. Because I feel, I felt you today asking those questions and I appreciate you asking those questions. And Bill, I appreciate the creativity. You know, trying to get some other stuff going on so we can save some stuff. But the reality of it is, we need to take care of our entire community. Because you wanna know what? The people, when we say that we're not taking care of the current community, we're gonna have nothing. You're gonna have big pot holes in the road. You're gonna, we're not gonna have that beautiful building that's getting built at Crandall. You're not gonna have stop signs that are put in the correct places. You're not gonna have all those things. It's all resources for all community. And I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot with any of that stuff. I'll talk to you for myself. My taxes are high. Can I afford an extra Starbucks? Can I afford going to Dunkin' Donuts? No, I don't. Because I choose to build a future in the community in which I I bought a house ten plus years ago. That's what I have.
Anybody else? Thank you. I entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose superintendent evaluation. So. Get invited into.
Motion to enter executive session, inviting the superintendent into that session.
Second. Discussion? All right. Jayden. Rainey.
Brian.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Katie.
Hi.
Right. Uh, just so you are more than welcome to shut down and go home. That's the last thing on the agenda. But people online, uh, we will put you into the waiting room. When we exit executive session, we'll let you back in. There is nothing else on the agenda, so if you wanna sign off, I certainly understand.